We do have a call, right? Thank you. If everyone could take your seats, we'll get started and I'll call the meeting to order. You have before you, members of the commission, the agenda that's been printed for us. Is there a motion that we adopt this agenda?
Motion?
All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, vote no. If you've had a chance to take a look at the minutes from the November 13th meeting, or would like to take a moment to do that now, that would be fine, but when you're ready, I'll take a motion to approve or modify those minutes.
How many questions?
Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of the minutes, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, vote no. Okay. At this time, we normally recognize council members who would like to speak early in the meeting as opposed to waiting until the matter you might be interested in comes up on the agenda, and that's perfectly fine. I think we have Councilman Pridemore. Would you like to speak at this time?
If you don't mind, Chairman, I'm way into it.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other council members, so we'll move ahead for our Nashville Next update. Jennifer.
Good afternoon, commissioners. It's good to see you all. My name is Jennifer Carlet, and I do special projects here at Metro Planning, and I'm here today to talk about Nashville Next and to give you an update on implementation. As you are aware, we're coming in on the very end of a three-year process for Nashville Next, and as such, we thought that this would be an appropriate time to talk to you about the next steps after adoption, which is implementation. It's going to occur on several different levels, so we wanted to spend a few minutes on that today, and to just remind you that Nashville Next, the plan itself, will be coming to the Planning Commission for Adoption in April 2015. So let's start with our implementation goals on kind of a meta-level. Nashville Next will have a section on implementation, and it's got a few top-level goals such as the idea that this is not a plan that sits on a shelf, that we've had a lot of Nashvillians, over 15,000 at this point, who've participated, and we will be doing everything in our power to implement the Nashville Next plan that they've given so much time and energy and insight to. We will also be making a commitment to regularly informing Nashvillians about the progress, both on our outputs, what kind of actions we're taking, and our outcomes, which kind of success we're having, and we will be monitoring new developments, not only in the built environment, but also in some of the trends that are impacting our city to see if we need to make amendments to Nashville Next, which is our next implementation goal, the idea that Nashville Next is regularly updated to remain relevant to future decisions. Nashville Next will be working, as we have throughout the process afterward during implementation, to work with public and private and nonprofit sectors to do coordination of our different action items, and as we hear back from these partners about things that they think need to change in Nashville Next for the document to remain relevant, we'll bring back changes to you for your approval. And then finally, looking at our wheelhouse at Metro Planning, we will be using the tools that we have within Metro, regulations and incentives, how we use the right-of-way capital improvements and other programs, and how we organize city government, using all of those tools and harnessing them to implement the goals that come out of Nashville Next. You may recall that in addition to being a planning document for the city for the coming 25 years, Nashville Next acknowledges that economic and workforce development, arts and culture, children and youth, housing, health, and the built environment, natural resources, all of these topics are facing trends in the coming 25 years that will impact how our city grows, what we choose to preserve, and how we serve our residents in the future. So each of those resource teams has their own goals and policies and actions that will be a product of Nashville Next. Here are our boilerplate definitions. The goal is that broad community-level desire for what they want to see in the future. The policy starts to hone in a bit on statements of intent to guide our decisions in the future, and then skipping down to the bottom, right now, the resource teams are working on action items, concrete steps, short-term, midterm, and long-term, to implement the city's goals. Do remember, too, that the goals come out of the input of the resource teams, which are Nashvillians with topical expertise, but also those resource teams responding to Nashvillians' concerns about what matters to them right now and in the future for Nashville. So as an example, I brought you one from economic and workforce development. They have an overall goal that acknowledges that we have a very diverse economic base, which is one of our keys to our success, and the policy is to maintain an adequate inventory of investment-ready places that can match the needs and uses of our businesses. So the action item, or one of many action items, is to identify what investments and tools would be necessary to make particular centers attractive to business relocation or expansion. Moving on to how Metro Planning itself will work on implementation, I wanted to remind the commissioners and the audience that Nashville Next, as the general plan for the county, it encompasses a land use plan, which we all know as our Community Character Manual, and our community plans, and it encompasses a transportation plan. Mobility 2030 will, during this process, be updated to Mobility 2040. Those nesting plans, the smaller ones underneath there, the Community Character Manual, the community plans, and the mobility plan, will all be updated and adopted with Nashville Next when we bring it to you in April. And remember that from all those plans, those are what guide our decisions on subdivision zoning and capital investment decisions. Which seem like a good opportunity to remind everybody that right now, we have our preferred future draft out for public input now through January 23rd. Folks can go online to NashvilleNext.net and participate in a survey that gets them to respond to the preferred future, where we're going to grow, what we're going to preserve, and what transportation investments we're going to make. And at that point, they can also give comment on proposed changes to the specific community plans as well. Recall that we will be updating the community plans to align them with the preferred future, and so all those community plan updates will be coming to you with Nashville Next for your consideration in April. Again, folks can go and respond to these through January 23rd at NashvilleNext.net. Okay. And then I wanted to spend a moment on some of the key implementation recommendations. These won't be a surprise to you, they've been some of the top vote-getters throughout Nashville Next, very, topics that the public is very interested in and that our resource teams have been hammering away on trying to find some solutions to address them. The first key implementation recommendation is the discussion of a high-capacity transit network. We have been working with the community to think about what kind of transit they want to see in the future, where they want to have that transit serving the community, and how they get around the community. So on the screen, what you see is the proposal for our high-capacity transit network lines. You see that there's some that are thicker, that are mostly our spokes, and then there is the addition of some crosstown connectors, which would be new for our city. The dashed lines refer to the fact that all of this is occurring within a regional context. And what we're talking about here is all total about 200 miles within this county of high-capacity transit. This is much larger than a 25-year plan, as you can imagine, that's not going to occur in 25 years, which is why we've also been talking to the community about how, where we are today, we have about 40 miles of high-capacity transit, that's the Music City Star and our two BRT light lines. If we go out to our 200 miles within the county, then we have some choices. If we want to do high-capacity within traffic, that's the BRT light system, then those 200 miles would, on average, cost us about $1.4 billion. Meanwhile, if we want to go the other route of having some transit out of traffic in dedicated lanes, then we're looking at over $7 billion. So again, not a 25-year plan, this is much longer, but I think what we've been talking to the community about is, none of this happens overnight. It's all of the decisions the community makes, the commission makes, and the council makes about where we locate density and where we locate investments to support transit. As you know, affordable housing has been a really hot topic in the community, and Nashville Next is addressing that as well. You may recall that one of the community conversations that we had over the summer was on housing and gentrification. It was attended by over 300 folks, and some of the research that was sponsored by Nashville Next by Ami Thurber, Dr. Frazier, and others from Vanderbilt was presented. Right now, at the bottom, I wanted to note that our housing resource team is continuing to work on their goals and policies and actions, but we are not waiting until the adoption of Nashville Next. Your commission has appointed a committee to discuss affordable housing and what kind of actions the commission could take. Meanwhile, the planning department is doing research into long-term, sustainable funding sources for the Barnes Fund, and we are also leading into the preliminary research on what inclusionary policy would look like, the NEXIS study, the feasibility study, and the structure of such a policy. So those are underway right now. And I don't want to dismiss the other work that the commission and council do for affordable housing by providing just a variety of housing types, and housing that is located in the right location for transit, and so on and so forth. Another key implementation recommendation is the idea that the city could strengthen the coordination of its investments. One way to think about this is when we think about the Gulch, when it was before it was the Gulch we know today, and how the city made investments in terms of streetscape, in terms of underground infrastructure, and that led to private sector interests and redevelopment. Another example are the investments that occurred out at Hickory Hollow with the new park and community center and the library, also some economic development incentives to bring different businesses and employment to the area. So the idea about coordinating our investment in centers where the location is tied to transit, the idea being that Nashville Next would propose that in the plan, there would be centers that would be Tier 1, we would be asking these centers to bear the greatest amount of growth of residents and jobs, and in conjunction with that, we would be providing more amenities and more services and more investments to them. There'd be a Tier 2 and a Tier 3 as well. Some of the investments that we could coordinate are listed on this slide, and so this would be a different path than the city has taken in the past. We would really be looking to certain areas to provide a bit more investment, and then asking that area to bear a bit more growth. Finally, the last key implementation recommendation that I wanted to hit on was the idea that we have heard from the community about their interest in preserving neighborhoods, yet we know we're also going to be welcoming a lot more Nashvillians over the coming 25 years, and so, pardon me, we've introduced the idea that along our prominent transit corridors and around our centers, we would have areas that would serve as a transition area, providing infill and different types of housing that would serve three purposes. This is the type of housing that would be interesting to boomers who are downsizing, millennials who are forming households, it would be close and in proximity to transit and services, and then also, it could provide a more harmonious transition from the height on a prominent center or corridor to the neighborhood. So within that transition and infill, we're talking about what we've been coming to call missing middle housing. Our city does quite well in providing single-family detached housing, and lately, we've had a real boom on mid-rise and high-rise, but there are many, many more types of housing in between those two that are very attractive to the boomers and the millennials that we aren't providing right now. So we're going to be introducing some action items in conjunction with missing middle housing. Finally, I'll end with our next steps, to remind everybody that January 23rd is when we close this portion of our community input on the draft preferred future and updates the community plans. We will release the entire draft of Nashville Next in February, and then in April, we will be coming to the Planning Commission to present the Nashville Next plan for adoption. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you for your time.
I think we're now ready for a presentation of items for deferral and withdrawal.
All right. The first item for deferral or withdrawal is item number 1A. This is a request to amend the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan and to add special policy language to the suburban neighborhood maintenance policy that applies to the property at 2001 Woodmont Boulevard to support the continuation of the existing non-residential uses. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. The next item is item 4 on page 6 of your agenda, 2013 NL-001-002. This is a request for approval of a neighborhood landmark development plan for property located at 5022 Old Heidt Ferry Pike to permit a café and restaurant use, a working farm and special events in addition to the general office uses previously approved. The staff recommendation is to defer to the January 8th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item 6A, 2014 CP-011-002. This is a request to amend the South Nashville Community Plan by changing the community character policy from T4 Neighborhood Maintenance Policy to T4 Mixed Use Neighborhood Policy for property located at Wedgewood Avenue Unnumbered. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 8th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting, and then the associated zone change with that is item 6B, 2014 SP-082-001. This is a request to rezone from R6 to SP zoning for property located at Wedgewood Avenue Unnumbered to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 8th, 2015 Commission meeting. Next item's item 13, 2014 SP-085-001. This is a request to rezone from RS 7.5 to SP zoning for property located at 2208 Eastland Avenue and Skyview Drive Unnumbered to permit up to 25 detached dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Next item on the deferral list is item 14, 2014 SP-086-001. This is a request to rezone from RS 10 to SP zoning for property located at 204 Ben Allen Road to permit up to 17 dwelling units, and the staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Next item is item 15, 2014 SP-087-001. This is a request to rezone from R6 to SP zoning for property located at 1505 and 1507 Holly Street to permit up to four dwelling units on three individual lots, including an existing two-family lot and single-family lot, in addition to a new lot for a single-family dwelling. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 8th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. And last item is item 19, 158-77P-005. This is a request to the Metro Planning Department for a periodic review of a portion of a PUD overlay district located at 771 Bell Road, approved for commercial development. The staff recommendation is to withdraw at the request of the applicant, and that is all on the deferral and withdrawal list.
Does anyone have any questions about any of these? Is there a motion? A second. All those in favor of deferring and withdrawing, as suggested by staff, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, vote no. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda now.
Before I get to the consent agenda, as information for our audience, if you're not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. As notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So as I read the following items into the record, please raise your hand if you would like one of these items removed from the consent agenda. First item is item 1B, 2014 SP-019-001. This is a request to rezone from R40 to SP zoning for property located at 2001 Woodmont Boulevard to permit physical therapy, medical office, and associated uses in the existing building. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item's item 7, 2014 Z-022 TX-001. This is a request to amend Title 17 of the Metropolitan Code to clarify procedures related to fees, in lieu contributions, and other assessments, estimates, or payments. Staff recommends approval. Next item's item number 8, 2007 SP-114-001. A request for final site plan approval to permit minor modifications to an SP for property located at 4,000 Wayland, sorry, 4,000 Wayland Drive to permit a modification to the plan for Lot 1. Staff recommends approval with conditions and disapprove without all the conditions. Next item is item number 9, 2013 SP-041-003. This is a request to rezone from RS 40 to SP zoning for property located at 5704 Old Harding Pike to permit up to four detached residential units. Staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. Next item's item number 10, 2014 SP-077-001. This is a request to rezone from RS 7.5 to SP zoning for property located at 1126 Shelton Avenue to permit up to three detached residential dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item's item 11, 2014 SP-079-001. This is a request to rezone from CS to SP zoning for properties located at 1614 and 1616 Fourth Avenue North to permit up to seven detached residential dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item's item 17, 144-66P-003. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan and for final site plan approval for a portion of the Overlook at Nashville West Commercial PUD Overlay District for property located at 6834 Charlotte Pike to permit a 9,800-square-foot restaurant and a 70,000-square-foot hotel use. Staff recommends approval with conditions. The next item's item 18, 154-79P-001. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan and for final site plan approval for a portion of the Lionshead Village West PUD Overlay District for property located at 26 White Bridge Pike to permit a traffic signal at the existing entrance location to the target and to permit a revised parking lot layout to accommodate the proposed traffic signal. Staff recommends approval with conditions. Next item is item 20, 74-79P-012. This is a request to revise a portion of the preliminary plan for the Nashborough Village PUD Overlay District for a portion of property located at 171 Bell Road to permit up to 20 residential units where 100 units were previously approved in a five-story building. Staff recommends approval with conditions. Next item's item 21, 2013 S-123-002. This is a request for final plat approval to create three lots within the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District on properties located at 2509 and 2511 Natchez Trace. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is item 22, 2014 S-224-001. This is a request for final plat approval to create two lots on property located at Tennessee Avenue Unnumbered. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item's item 24, 2013 UD-002-002. This is a request for a modification to the Murphysboro Pike UDO District standards for property located at Murphysboro Pike Unnumbered to permit a modification of the front setback and the perimeter landscape requirements. Staff recommends approval with conditions. And then, under Other Business, item 25, Employee Contract Renewal for Mary Beth Stevens, Kyle Lampert, and Tiffany Capehart. Staff recommends approval. And the last item is item 29, Accept the Director's Report and Approve Administrative Items, and staff is recommending approval of that. That's all the items on the consent agenda.
So commissioners, you've heard the suggestions about recommendations for consent items, and that no one has opposed that at this point. Is there a motion that we approve the consent items as read?
Chairman, sorry. Can I note my refusal from items 17 and 20?
17 and 20?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else before we vote on the consent agenda? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, vote no. That leaves us with which items?
Mr. Chairman, items 2, 3, 5, 12, 16, and 23.
So those six are the only items that will be discussed and potentially acted upon today, and if you're here for one of the other items we've just read off, you're welcome to stay, or you can leave at this point. When you're ready.
Good afternoon. Lisa Milligan, I'll be presenting item number 2. This is a proposal, a request to rezone from IR and IG to SP mixed-use to permit a mixed-use development. The site is approximately 4.74 acres in size. It's located west of First Avenue North, east of Second Avenue North, south of Monroe, and north of Madison Street in Germantown. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Current zoning on the site is IR and IG, and it is surrounded by IR and IG zoning as well. The plan as proposed includes four separate buildings. The uses allowed will be up to 450 multifamily units and 25,000 square feet of non-residential uses. There is an interior private drive with pedestrian gathering areas, and there are also pedestrian areas, pedestrian amenity areas located around the perimeter of the building as well. There are garage entrances to the structured parking on both Monroe and Madison Street. The height of the proposed building would range, the proposed buildings would range from four to six stories in height. These are the proposed conceptual elevations, and this is on Second Avenue North. The property on the bottom, on the lower image, is closest to Madison Street, and the top image is closest to Monroe. And then this is some concept imagery that the developer has submitted to us. They are proposing industrial warehouse-style buildings, and along with the concept imagery and the conceptual elevations, they have also added in some architectural standards for the buildings to in some architectural standards for the buildings to provide for glazing along the exterior as well as entrances on those facades. The finalized elevations would be provided with the SP, and we have a condition in there that we have to make sure that they meet what was provided with the preliminary SP. The existing policy for the area is T4 Urban Mixed Use Neighborhood. The proposed plan does meet four critical planning goals, and that it provides a network of sidewalks throughout the development on both the public streets around the development as well as the private street interior to the development. It is near an existing bus line. Bike parking will be provided, and this provides for an additional housing option in the area on an underutilized urban site. These are the existing conditions on the site. It's currently a surface parking lot used for storage. And again, based on, based on the plan being consistent with the T4 policy and that it's meeting several critical planning goals, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Okay. This item is now open for public hearing. We'll first hear from the applicant. And you will have up to 10 minutes to present your case, and you can reserve up to two for rebuttal. If you could identify yourself and give your address, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Members of the Commission. My name is Hal Clark. I'm with Civil Site Design Group, 630 South Gate Avenue. And on behalf of our client, Lifestyle Communities, I'd first like to let you know that we agree with all the conditions that were outlaid in the staff recommendations. And to also add a little bit to the staff presentation, talk a little bit about the vision that we see for the project, a little bit about the character, the really list some specifics about the nature of the place that we propose in your packet. And when we started envisioning this project, we as a design team and the client kept gravitating to this idea of a historic, older warehouse district that was reinvigorated, repurposed, and re-envisioned, much like you would see in the Pearl District in Portland, Oregon, just with a local Germantown character and flair to it. And when we, when we kept talking through this with the architects and the client, it was, we really started to get some inspiration from some of the landmark buildings around Germantown, like the New Hoff, Peter Nappi Building, the Wurden Lofts, some of the landmark Roff and Daughter, some of those landmark and real character buildings around the neighborhood, and really embracing that style and the character and that feeling that you get. And taking that kind of architecture and bringing it down to the ground in a real urban way and to create that urban and walkable environment with that kind of architecture, creating the streetscapes with the real pedestrian, generous pedestrian zones, creating the active streetscapes with on-street parking and entrances into buildings, and on the ground floor incorporating the mix of amenity areas, some retail, some residential units, and mixing those together on the ground floor and giving it that real urban repurposed nature to the project. I'd really just like to be here to answer any questions, describe any of the other areas in more detail, and I'll just reserve the time to do that.
All right. Thank you. If you're here in support of this, if you would come forward at this time, if you wish to speak and are here in support of this proposal, this is the time to come forward and be heard. If there's no one here to speak in favor, if you're here in opposition, please come forward to the microphone, and you'll have up to two minutes to speak each person. Is there anyone? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Are any questions at this time for the applicant who asked to? I don't guess you have two minutes to rebut, but it is in order, I think, before we discuss to ask if you have questions of the applicant.
I have some questions. I didn't know if that would come up in our discussion.
All right. We'll just wait and see if it does. So we'll just close the public hearing. All those in favor closing the public hearing, vote aye.
Aye.
Pose that, vote no. It's closed. All right. Let's go around this way. Why don't we start down this way then? Andre, what, do you have some questions?
Well, I do. I mean, I think it's a really exciting aim of what we're trying to accomplish over in that area. I guess my question's, I guess if you don't mind answering directly, the way the layout, as I understand it, is that the focus of the pedestrian access and vibrancy is in the middle of the two buildings in the drive that goes between them from, from second to, first to second. And so my, what that leads me to, which I think sounds like an interesting idea, but I'm just curious about the potential activity on those perimeter city streets. And I don't know if the way you designed it is that, you said the word repurpose, if it could be repurposed in the future, that that could all be shifted to retail or something that might invite pedestrian access and activity all the way around, and you're not ready for it yet? Or if that will be sort of a parking glass dead zone forever? I just wasn't sure what I was expecting to see on the outside.
Sure. Well, the concept isn't to internalize all the amenities in retail space. It's also to, it's actually in addition to the outside space. So we wanted to activate the internal private streets with a couple of active uses. But, for example, the streetscape along Second Avenue is also active, and there's one building there that, that will have the leasing areas and the perhaps third-party retail. And on, on north, there will be parts of buildings that will have some residential units that are also in the ground level. But along Second Avenue, there's, from, from the ground level pedestrian zone to the upper stories is all active use. There's no exposed parking garage or anything like that. So it's, it's more like windows and balconies and street frontage units and retail and amenity space along the perimeter streets. But we also wanted to internalize some of these amenities. They have a program that is a signature restaurant that they provide in their, in their projects, and that's normally a small bar and grill, and that's internalized, and it's, it's open to the public, but it's also an amenity for, for the residents. And so that's part of that internal street network.
So, okay, so on Second Avenue where it says, say, example, residential building and structured parking, that's, it's, parking access is internal to the buildings or?
Well, the access, there's no, there's no parking access on to, off of Second Avenue.
Okay.
So the parking decks will be accessed off of Monroe and Madison. And so that means the entire frontage of Second Avenue is really unbroken. It's pedestrian entrances into the specific buildings and ground floor uses and pedestrian zone. And then there's the access to the parking decks are off of Second Avenue.
And then is first the same, like second, actively?
It is, but the rail, with the railroad there, there's a pedestrian zone that's down that part of the property line, but there's no direct access in that, on that side.
Okay. I just, I just, I guess I couldn't tell as much from the plans because it's, we're really concerned about not having dead zones for our city streets and our areas.
They were, they were very careful to minimize the vehicular access points and the exposed parking from the street, the public streets. And so we, and the loading zones and all that, and that's some of the conditions that came from the staff recommendation.
And I think also, once upon a time, there was a Civic Design Center study of some of those road where Madison drives through, and we sort of slingshot our cars downtown. And I don't know if that might be a timing that we look at that again with the staff and the Civic Design Center and maybe Public Works to consider what, if more developments come in that section, what we could do, at least from a design concept, before we get into budgets and legalities, but just kind of consider what we might want there, because we've got lots of new activity right there, and I don't know how that might help.
Well, I will, I will add that one of the conditions was that our clients were to dedicate the necessary right-of-way on each side to, to actually bring those right-of-ways up to what's required on an urban street. So I guess that is open later to, to maybe do some things like that. But that's incorporated in our plan.
We've got about at least three projects on Madison, I guess on, yeah, is it Madison, I guess, between First and Fourth. And so we have been working with Public Works to make sure that that street is really proper for, I mean, it's a heavy pedestrian street, so it has to have a heavy pedestrian orientation and focus. So we're working with them on that.
So I guess just one more question. On Madison and Monroe, those are going to be the entrances to the garages, the places where the dumpsters are. Will there be some pedestrian access or life there too?
Yes, there are sidewalks on both, along the street.
But on the, but it'll be pretty much a wall along the sidewalk?
There'll be pedestrian connections into the buildings on those streets as well.
Great. Sounds really exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica?
No questions.
Okay. Is there a motion? Heard the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Those vote no. It is approved. Which brings us down to number three, I believe.
Okay. Don't go too far. She must have had a very...
I guess that's very big enough.
Ready?
Go right ahead. Yes.
Okay. I'll also be presenting Item Number 3 for you. This is a, this is Forest Bend. This is a request to revise the preliminary PUD plan and for final site plan approval to permit the development of 47 multifamily dwelling units. The site is approximately four acres in size. It's located in Madison, north of Neely's Bend Road off of Forest Park Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. The existing zoning of the property is RS 5 with a PUD overlay. This plan that is shown currently is the approved PUD plan that was done in 2007. As a little bit of history, the PUD was originally approved in 84. There was a 2004 revision on this site for 47 units with a pool and a pool house. In 2007, the Planning Commission approved a revision to the PUD overlay to remove the pool and pool house and permit construction of 47 multifamily units. This is the current plan, which permits up to 47 multifamily units. The proposed plan revises the layout and access points of the currently approved plan. The proposed plan is consistent with the 2007 plan as well as the concept of the originally approved PUD plan. Again, staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove, or, I'm sorry, just approve with conditions.
All right. Before we open the public hearing, just as a matter of procedure, we have a new member or two, fairly new member or two. So this is a PUD revision, not, not an amendment to the PUD. But and for, for our, our guests and people who might be interested, would you go over that for us, exactly who decides what and what makes it a revision instead of a plan
The plan, the zoning ordinance permits the Planning Commission to approve minor modification under certain conditions. Staff is recommending that this request be approved with conditions because the request is consistent with those requirements. And the requirements are for earlier, for PUDs that were earlier approved, there are some changes that can be made to be considered a revision, as long as the, the change does not alter the basic development concept of the plan. The boundary of the planned development overlay district is not expanded. There's no change in the general PUD classification. There's no deviation from special performance criteria or design standards. There's no increase in the total number of residential dwelling units originally authorized by the ordinance. There's no introduction of new vehicular access points to an existing street not previously designated for access. Floor area doesn't increase, no change in uses, et cetera. And so none of those things have been done in this case, and therefore it can be approved as a revision.
All right. And the import of that is that we are the final decision-maker on, on a revision, and it doesn't go to the council.
Correct.
All right. I guess we're ready for a public hearing on this matter. We normally hear from the proponent, and if you're ready at this point, the applicant, proponent, whatever, please come forward and give us your name and address. And you have up to 10 minutes to, to talk with us about this. You don't have to take that long, and you can reserve two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Chris Ainsworth, I represent the owner and developer. I'm 65 Napa Valley Circle, Madison, Mississippi, for my address. This is Forest Bend Townhomes. The, it's going to be affordable housing. Funding was provided by THDA with tax exempt bonds and 4% tax credits. And also it has an MDHA grant that we received earlier this year. Forest Bend Townhomes purchased the property this past summer, June 2014. It's 47 three-bedroom, two-bath townhomes, approximately 1,200 square feet each. Two of them are flats, just to meet our ADA requirements. Think of the, if you see the top left corner up there, there's what, three, three are There's an office, a community room that we provide that can be used by the community for community meetings. Also, the tenants have special services that we provide for them there. There's also a community playground that we'll provide out of the southeast corner. With that, I have, I have some renderings that I brought with me today that I'll leave up here, if that's okay?
You might want to pass those to the staff.
Sure. And also have the drawings. If there are any questions about those, I can answer. And I'll, I also like to say that we have met all the other conditions with our engineer. He's with me here today, if you guys have any questions for him.
All right. Thank you. I'll leave the rest for questions.
Should we go on with other supporters or go with the councilmen?
We'll, we'll finish off by asking if there are other folks here in support, and you can reserve your time, and then we'll go. Because I know there's some other folks who want to be heard. But are there other supporters of this who would like to be heard at this point? All right. Counselman, would you like to speak first on, at this, on the?
Thank you, Chairman.
I think you're not for this.
Well...
Or maybe seeking something other than approval today?
There is a, as stated earlier, there is a lot of history here.
Okay.
And some of it was mentioned concerning the, in 1984, when it was initially approved. And then again, in several attempts to cancel the overlay were failed. Reason for failure was due to promise of a pool and a clubhouse in a plan. In 2002, the Planning Commission recommended approval of an amendment which eliminated the pool and the pool house. Went to the council in 2002, but was later withdrawn. In 2004, a revision of the PUD was approved by commission, by the commission for the 47 multifamily unit with pool and pool house.
Same thing?
Again, in 2000, then in 2007, the plan is considered as a revision to the PUD overlay. Staff recommended that proposal be, remove the pool and pool house from plan as an amendment, but that required council approval, but was actually turned, turned into a revision where there was no need to go before council. That is why I'm here. Just recently, well, three years into my first term as council, and the members of the community never had an opportunity back in, in 2007 to voice their concerns about this development, and they weren't even aware about it until most recent information came available concerning this, this PUD and, and the revision that was made. And naturally, it wasn't... revision that was made. And naturally, once it was, there was notification of the plan, it was already on the consent agenda. So, and since there was no action taken by council, this was the only opportunity to have to speak. And I'm basically speaking on behalf of the people that live in that community on Forest Park, who never had the opportunity to speak in 2007, which I was not a council member then, but they, a lot of them have become elderly, and some of them just weren't able to make it today. So I'm basically speaking on their behalf. They have, since this initiated back in 2007, evolved, it's become, the demographics of Forest Park has really changed. And what may have been feasible for Forest Park back then, like a swimming pool and a pool house and even a gym or something like, is not feasible today because of the demographics of Forest Park. Forest Park is not a very long street. It has several apartment complexes that in the past have had dealings with codes, and I'm dealing with them involving many codes violations. And this is immediately next door to where this proposed development is going. The people in the area are, once they see and once they heard about the possibility of it being a, not a mixed income, which is what they were kind of thinking it would be because of, I have the plan that they spoke, we spoke of earlier concerning what the Vanderbilt study that will be presented to Nashville Next, they were very active in that. Some of them actually did attend those Nashville Next meetings and made suggestions. And they were looking at that survey and the things that they were thinking the Nashville Next was going to implement, and it didn't turn out that way. So again, they came and asked for me to speak for them, and that's again why I'm here. They just feel like that small strip has no sidewalks, has no streetlights, it's totally saturated with one-bedroom apartments and with, I wouldn't say transient, but with people that, individuals that don't stay very long. And so their concern is that with children, these all, these townhomes that they're building, which are very, very nice townhomes, I've seen the picture of them, but they're all three-bedroom, two-baths, which is going to create a lot more, hopefully, there'll be children there. I mean, I hope that's what they would want to be there, is children. And they just feel like it's going to, with the character of the neighborhood, they're in fear, not only of their surroundings, but they're in fear of the people that will live there also because of the things that, I guess, is their councilman's responsibility in Public Works and trying to improve that neighborhood. So with that being said, I am just their spokesperson, giving them an opportunity to voice their opinion because they did not have that opportunity in 2007. And once they realize that they would not have an opportunity now, they ask that I come and speak for them, and I would gladly do so. So basically, I would say I'm opposed to it from their behalf.
I have a question to ask while you're still here. In 2007, there was an action by this body as a revision. And you're saying they didn't have an opportunity to come because they just didn't quite know what was going on at that time? It wasn't really very public for them? They didn't get to come before us?
Yes, sir. And I think another reason being was that during, they thought at one point that it would be going to the council.
To the council, okay.
And what happened was, it was initially considered as a revision, I mean, as an amendment. But then the members of the planning commission initially made it a review, a revision. So it never went before council. The only time it actually went before council was in 2002, but for some reason, it was withdrawn.
Okay. So it was through those things that they just have not really been heard until today? And now this is not going to the council, it's a review here?
Yes, yes. And we did, I will say that we did have a community meeting with the builder, a representative of the builder. And they made several, they asked, because they're, you know, they saw, in their mind and in their words, they saw the writing on the wall. Because everything seemed to be, everyone, every condition was approved. So they were under the impression that it's going to be approved. And I explained to them, that's up to you, up to the planning commission. But anyway, they, so they did make some suggestions to the builders, to an individual who is not here today. And as far as I know, they have not been, they have not been either proposed to the owner or, I have not gotten any information whether they've been accepted or not.
All right. So they had some suggestions for additional conditions or something like that, and it may or may not be that they're being incorporated into this?
Yes, sir.
But this is the same number of units, apparently, as we talked about back in 2007? Is that right? The number of units has not changed, as far as you know?
As far as I know, the number of units, at one point, they were flats and townhomes. But as far as multifamily, I don't know. Well, in 2004, it does say that it was approved by the commission for 47 multifamily units. So...
All right. Okay. So you would urge us to not act today to approve this?
Yes, sir. That is my request on behalf of my constituents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're now ready to hear from anyone else who is in opposition or wants to be heard on this matter. Mr. Williams?
Rick Williams, 1733 Neelies Bend Road, Madison, Tennessee. Also a board member of a new organization called Madison Now. We're a lot like CNAP and T-GAP and Green Hills. We're trying to make Madison better. I'd like to pass around, if I could, if that's permissible, this picture of the street where this is going to be. To kind of get back to what Councilman Pridey Moore was saying, and I appreciate so much our councilman being here today and trying to help the community become a better place to live. I'm trying to speak for all the citizens that can't be here today. Unfortunately, as of Tuesday afternoon, when I checked with Letitia, the young lady here at Planning who's been very helpful to us and very straightforward, she said this was still on the agenda as staff recommendation for deferral. So we had a community meeting this past Tuesday night, and we told the folks that it didn't look like this would be up for discussion today. Therefore, that's why we don't have many members from the community here. I know at the public meeting, we had probably 30 or 40 members, councilmen, that night, that wanted to hear about it and then indicated they would come here and speak today. So I would certainly ask that if you could defer this for 30 days where the community could know about it and finally get a chance to come speak about it. Quite frankly, there, under the federal census tracts, we've looked, there are 660 low-income subsidized housing units within a mile of this location. We think that's a very high density to deal with. In 10 months this past year, there have been over 700 calls in the tract that this particular unit is going to be built in, according to the Community Relations Officer of the Metropolitan Public Police Department. He reported there have been 700 calls in 10 months, over 700 calls to that area. Just north of this project on Forest Park is the Lexington Garden Apartments, another very low-income housing project that is, has issues with codes and police department all the time. That's my time.
Well, possibly. Are you speaking as the spokesperson for the group that is here?
I'm speaking as a spokesperson for Madison Now, yes, sir.
Because if you are, then we can allow you up to five minutes. But then you're the only person we can hear from, from Madison Now.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, there could be other citizens here, if that's okay.
Who aren't necessarily affiliated with Madison Now.
Right, right.
I think under our rules, then we can give you, what, three more minutes?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyway, so just north of here is another development like this that has many issues with codes and the police department. I'm sure Councilman Pridey Moore can speak to that. Right in the center of this is a development called Coventry Woods. There's about a 24, 26-unit condominium project. I've walked and talked to those people that live there. They certainly done with this project built. And they're all individual property owners. And my concern is for them. When you build another low-income subsidized project on the south side of them, they already have one on the north side of them. What's going to happen to their property value? And who's going to help render the falling value they'll have that they can never sell their property? You know, it is what it is, and it might not be politically correct to talk like this, but I'm just telling it like it is, Mr. Chairman. And I feel sorry for these people. They already have a very contentious, they would shake their head when I told them what was happening to the south of them. So we beg of you to protect the citizens of Madison and these people that individually own their homes and their value of their homes. We just feel like there's a high concentration of low-income subsidized housing in there. I think 660 units, according to the federal census tracts. We're trying to make Madison better, and this is where we want to start. And again, it's a situation where we hope that, I would beg instead of you taking it up today, to please defer this. At one point, we think it wasn't going to be built. As recent as 30 days ago, we were told this project had to have two entrances, according to the plans reviewer from the fire department. She said it has had two entrances and two exits, two separate entrances to the property because of the density and how it was being built. So we were happy about that. And I came by, I think, Monday afternoon, and I found out that had changed. The fire department had changed their recommendation. So I went up and talked to Melanie Hudson, I think, is the lady that works for y'all. She works, she's from the fire department, she reviews the plans. Very straightforward, very honest. And I said, "Well, ma'am, could you tell me what the change was? Would you like to tell me?" She goes, "Well, I didn't personally make a change." She says, "I still feel like it should be like it was, two entrances." I said, "Would you tell me then how it got changed?" She said, "Well, Al Thomas, who's my boss, said it should change." Well, I found that highly unusual. I asked her, I said, "Well, how many times does he get involved in cases like this?" I said, "You seem to be the lady that does this all the time." She says, "Well, not many times at all." So it troubles me that the recommendation of the person that every day hears and reviews plans had one recommendation for two entrances and exits to this property, and now there's been a change and they only have to have one. I think she was looking at it from a safety and security reason. And I sure appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Is there anyone else who's not with the Madison Now group but would like to speak against this proposal? Come forward, please. If you give your name and address, and you have two minutes to speak.
Well, I joined Madison Now, but I'm talking as a person, as a private citizen right now. My name is Ken Johnson. I live at 1040 Berwick Trail in Madison, Tennessee. I own commercial real estate there, own residential real estate, own my home, and own a business. And all I've seen is my property values go down because of developments like this. On this section of Forest Park, there's been 770 police calls in 10 months, less than 10 months. So we're putting it right back in there. Another thing this development has done, it's a generic-looking thing. I've seen Ebola clinics in Africa that looks better than these. It's generic. It doesn't look good. It has no color. It has no appeal to it. Another thing, there's no playground for the kids to play. Last 20 years, I've spent my life selling sporting goods. You don't see kids out playing anymore, even in apartment complexes. You see them out smoking behind the place, smoking crack, doing drugs, getting in gangs and doing everything else. This has no place for kids to play. It has nothing for kids, other than just living in there. We're going to put them in two of the lowest schools in the state, in the lowest 5% of the state. The schools can't handle them. The schools don't have time to teach the kids and stuff that they have now, or they wouldn't be in the lowest 5% of the state. So I just think if you build this and you have that there with no resources, y'all can approve a million places to live, but you don't think about the kids and what has to be done. So I think if this place gets built, you're going to throw 100 kids out on the street, or 100 kids over the place where there's 770 police calls. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to be heard? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Oh, I'm sorry. There's a, you can have up to two minutes rebuttal if the applicant would like. Do you wish, you don't have to, though, that's...
I'll just say that...
Wait till you get back up here so we can pick it up on the mic.
You know, a couple of things. We do have a playground. Although it's a small playground, we do have one. We are affordable housing, and we're going to have an onsite manager that will, you know, watch these tenants. You know, you can't, simply can't disapprove us or defer us for being affordable housing. I mean, I don't really understand that comment. But that's it. Any other questions for me, I'll take them.
All right.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I moved.
If you're in favor of that motion, vote aye.
Aye.
Those vote no.
Mr. Chairman, before the commission discusses this, I would just remind them, your criteria for review are the criteria that the council has set forth in their bill in terms of that we went over. The issue of whether it's an affordable housing project is not part of the criteria that you use to review that, so...
Before we discuss, we obviously have the authority to pass a motion to approve, disapprove, or defer. And it is properly before us. Is that right?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. And it is true that we are, this is, under council ordinance, this is a commission decision, not a council decision.
And you're acting fundamentally in an administrative role because this is, are they administratively following the procedures that the council set forth in terms of this plan? I mean, it's not a question of, do you want to rezone the property? That's already been done. The conditions have already been set forth, and the revision provisions of the code are what the commission has to review it under.
Okay. Let's see. Hunter, why don't we start with you?
I'd like the staff to just, again, repeat, maybe more specifically, what's changed from the current plan that's approved and they could currently construct.
Okay, this is...
Just before you do that, because those that have the staff report, I know this is important for the public and everybody understands it, but it's also on page 30 of your staff report, so...
Okay, this is the existing currently approved plan, which was approved by the planning commission in 2007. This shows the layout of the plan. And this is the proposed plan. And so you've had some slight changes in the layout and slight changes to access, but it's consistent with the existing plan, and it's consistent with the concept of the original approval of the PUD.
Okay, so the second connection to the, is that to the north, has been eliminated? Is that correct?
Correct.
In this plan? Looks like maybe there's more townhomes versus flats?
Correct.
Another change?
Correct.
Generally, the street network layout?
Correct.
Parking areas?
Building location.
Building locations are generally the same. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Councilman Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just got one, another question. What was the issues that prevented this project from going forward back in 2007? You said this goes back to 2007. Is that correct?
This is the plan that was approved in 2007. There was a, the PUD goes back further than that. And there was a revision in 2004, and then this was a revision in 2007. Why they didn't move forward, I couldn't answer. But this is what the currently approved plan was, which was done in 2007.
So none of the residents got to speak on it even back in 2007? Is that correct?
I can't speak to that.
And in 2007, it was a PUD revision that was done, the approval was, only went to the planning commission. That did not go to council. It was just like this meeting. This is a PUD revision. It is a public meeting where people can come speak. But I don't recall the exact number of people that were at the meeting.
Okay. I'm kind of inclined to believe, since no one spoke on this before, that we may want to consider a deferment to get the residents who live in that particular area a chance to speak on this particular project before we go any further with this. That would be my recommendation. See, Tim?
I very rarely disagree with the councilman, but I happen to disagree tonight, I think, based on the minor nature...
I think based on the minor nature of the revisions and the staff recommendation, I'm inclined to support that.
Jessica?
I guess I'm kind of wondering, because there's such a narrow opportunity really for comment, I guess I'm sort of in the same boat where it's like we can't... We're not re-debating the entire project. It's zoned for 47 units. They've gone back in with 47 units. I mean, if we're sort of limited to this administrative piece, I'm just not sure what additional public comment would... I mean, I don't know that we'd have... It would really impact what we could do. So, you know, I certainly recognize the community concern. I'm glad to hear that there's a case manager onsite and hopefully there are some mitigating factors. Bringing in new quality affordable housing does not necessarily lead to property decline... Property value decline. Lots of research has shown the opposite. So, you know, I'm willing to go forward with the benefit of the doubt on that.
Andre?
I have a question. We received a letter from somebody about discussing our infill subdivision rules, and I think that may be... That may be one thing that's changed since this was initially designed. And are these points made in this letter something the staff has considered that we... Or I mean, are they correct or incorrect? I just didn't know if we had... They were talking about that the lot frontage was not appropriate for infill subdivision, I think, was one of the points, the width. And I wasn't sure if they were talking about the access at the road frontage or they're talking about the individual lots, which is not relevant because it's a PUD. I wasn't sure what this meant.
Yeah, this is an existing piece of property and this is not a subdivision application. Therefore, any of those requirements would not apply. That only applies in cases where you're taking a piece of property, dividing it into additional lots, and that's not the case in this situation.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure. We want to clarify that for the public, that it's a PUD, and so these PUD rules are what we're following and listening to. Thanks. Yeah, I don't have any other comment.
I did want to ask a question or two. Do we know about the fire department situation? Can you elaborate any more on that, or is that something that... We know what happened there or what the rationale was?
What was indicated to us from the fire department is that this was not considered as 47 single-family homes. It was considered as 47 multifamily, as they're all on one lot. And that changes the way that the fire code considers access issues and therefore would only require one access and not two.
Under their existing...
Under the fire code, the adopted fire code.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions that people have? Andre?
If it were an SP, we would be able to get into potential design details and materials and certain aspects of the layout, but because it's a PUD, we're looking at it as it's presented based on how... Compared to how it was presented before only. Is that correct?
Right. The originally approved PUD is... This is a revision to a currently existing PUD, and so we're guided by that original ordinance that was adopted and by the standards and the zoning ordinance for revisions to PUDs.
So, our ability to comment or address the design and the layout of the... Or the materials or any of those things are not part of what we get to do at this point.
Just to clarify, that could be part of... If they were applying for a new PUD, you could deal with that. They're not requesting a rezoning, either as a PUD or an SP.
Right. I just wanted to get that.
Any further questions or comments? Hunter?
I was just going through the criteria that the council set forth for us to follow and checked off all of them. And the last one that we get to, I was just curious about in terms of the criteria for I assume, based on the staff recommendation, that the application does not meet the criteria for inactivity.
Well, there's a separate application process to determine whether a PUD is active or inactive, and that is not what's before you today.
Is your question if that were to happen, is it active?
I mean, we haven't analyzed that. That's a different question than what's before us today. I mean, there's a separate process and it has to be applied for to determine that.
But the council set out for us to determine that the amendment shall... Or the revision shall adhere to all these provisions. And so, I just want to make sure that we're meeting all of those provisions if that's not our legal counsel. If I'm interpreting that correctly or not, whether we're being thorough.
If you're pointing to the section of, I guess it's Part II there, under 174120 Subpart G, that gets into the council showed here the provisions of the code in terms of the amendments that come back to them, differentiating there from the minor modifications that are contemplated in the first portion of that subsection of the Metro Code. Again, the minor modifications such as is before the commission tonight with this particular case is one, and I think the term was used earlier, that's handled pretty much administratively here at the planning commission level. And while these are criteria that are appropriate for review in terms of your determination whether or not the minor modification is appropriate, the shall language does apply to that which is going to go back to the council in the event of a full-blown amendment, a bigger-scale amendment, if you will.
Okay. Yeah, my apologies. I understand. So, that criteria is what we would base our recommendation on to council, should it be considered an amendment. However, there was criteria that was listed. So, and I didn't... Is that in our staff report?
One of them. About your staff. Yeah, but this is... This is... Which is...
I just want to make sure we're following the criteria, I guess.
While you're looking, actually, I had another question. The staff originally had deferred if recommendations were not received from Stormwater and Water prior to the meeting. And they were received and approved once final... And just contingent on final plans. Is that... Just wanted to clarify that.
Correct. Right. Yeah, they were... Yes, that was why the deferral recommendation was...
Just for... Yeah.
Well, the northern parcel is part of this PUD. It is developed, and that's one issue that would be looked at on whether this PUD is active or inactive, whether there's any other development that's occurred within this PUD. And so, there is other development that's occurred within the PUD. There have been applications over the years to pursue development on this site. Those are other things that would be considered on whether this PUD is... This portion of the PUD is determined to be active or inactive. And just looking at those issues, I believe that staff would recommend that this PUD is active.
Were it to be before us?
Right. But that's not.
But it's not.
All right. Okay. I do have some concern and have for some time about the way we put in our staff reports defer unless we get this from this agency, because I think there is some potential confusion to the public that, you know, that it's going to be deferred. So, you know, I'll make a motion here, but I would like the staff to look at how we're presenting the staff report when we're waiting on information from other agencies. Perhaps it's recommend approval.
Unless...
Unless we don't receive... And then a deferral, you know, we recommend deferral, perhaps. So, I'll make a motion that we approve staff recommendation.
All right. Is there discussion? I would like to discuss a little bit. I believe the developer in this case has done what they should do, needed to do. I believe the only real change here is it affordable housing or not. But I also believe that we want as a policy to promote full participation. This isn't a staff report where it's accepting as a matter of course, but it is open for public debate. And I believe in this case, there were people who would have been here today had they not had the impression both that there was a fire department issue and a... Which I don't think there really is in terms of how this would come out. But I think other people did not show up to have their only day in court, since this doesn't go to the commission. So, it bothers me as well. I don't think this is likely to be... I believe this commission is pretty much on record as favoring every opportunity to promote affordable housing we can. I'm not convinced that a deferral motion to give other people the opportunity to come and hear and for us to have a little more discussion with the fire department is out of order. So, I'll be voting against the motion, but only because of that deference to having as much participation as possible. So, that's my reason on that. Mr. Chairman? Counselor?
I just want to clear up my motion, and I agree with what you were saying. I made the motion to defer because of that same issue, but that does not preclude my thought for the approval of this particular issue. I think it's a good bill. I just thought that there's a gap in it where you got that clause unless... When they came in and brought in the necessary approvals from the water services, and we've done it before, but it does create a lag when some people think that it's not on and then it turned out to be on or vice versa. It creates a kind of a gap between people's thinking, which may have been... Would have been here and not. So, that's why I made my particular motion. Of course, I also believe that the bill's a good bill, and I'm hoping that whatever we do will lead to approval.
All right. So, other discussion or are you ready to vote?
Well, Stuart, I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, and I feel like there has been a disconnect a little bit. My concern, if we were to defer it at this point in order to allow for more public debate or bring more public message to us, I also don't want to lead anybody on. If we feel like our only rules are where we are, what we've been talking about, that there's no other grounds by which we could disapprove it, I hate to drag everybody in here and make them think that their voice is going to be heard, but it doesn't really matter. I mean, I don't... I just... I feel like we've heard a good array of frustration and what the points are from the neighbors and the people. It's not everybody, but I tend to want to wait and get more public input, too, but I also want to be really careful with our... What we can and can't do with that information.
That's obviously a good point, too. We don't want to be going through the motions. I understand that. On the other hand, there's a lot of matters we hear where we're pretty sure, looking at the staff report, how we're going to vote, and we do have our minds changed for reasons that we never would have anticipated by what we hear. These are all good points, and we probably need to go ahead and take a temperature of the commission and see whether we want to approve the motion or have another motion, is what I'm thinking. So, the motion before us that's been seconded is to approve with the conditions.
But I guess it's just a point of clarification. I mean, I don't really feel like there's any place that public... Additional public input can make a difference based on what we're voting on, other than to register additional, you know, displeasure with the project. I don't think there's anywhere in here that we... We're not reopening this all to debate it. It's basically an administrative issue at this point. And so...
With the possible exception of what we've heard, which may not be what the fire department tells us, but what we've heard of two differing points of view about the fire department and...
If you were to defer, would you say that you would want to have a presentation by the fire department to kind of... But give us further information so we know we all have the correct basis of information?
I would hope the staff would simply work that up.
Or the staff would tell us or something.
Right, given the testimony we've heard. But that's, you know, I'm not... You know, we need to vote how we want to vote. And if we defer it, then we defer it and people can come speak and the fire department can be asked questions by staff. But the motion is to approve, and it's been seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. And all opposed? And that motion fails, I believe, three to three. Is there another motion?
Well, I guess I would move to defer with the instruction to the staff to get further clarification of ingress and egress questions and reopen the public hearing.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Well, let's talk about this ingress/egress issue. I'm not sure how, and maybe this is a staff issue, staff question, how can we force this property owner to gain access to the property to the north to meet fire code? I don't think we can force that upon them.
Well, we would have to investigate that. I mean, this was one... This was a one PUD at one time. There may very well be some easements and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, that was the issue, I believe, is that the private drives are on the northern part of this, and these will be private drives, and getting easements in place so that they can connect was the issue. We originally wanted there to be a connection, but the... I think there was an issue... You may want to ask the applicant about that, but I think there was an issue regarding getting easements to connect two private drives to each other.
So, before we...
Well, part of what I was going to say is part of it is about connectivity, that we're always encouraging connectivity. It may not be just about the fire code, but go ahead.
Well, but I think to debate the practicality of connectivity among two different landowners, I'm not sure that's really our purview.
Because it's not the same street.
Correct. So, I think if we're going to defer this to explore connectivity in a second fire point, I think that's the wrong reason for deferral.
Yes.
I guess, you know, I go... My previous point was this criteria that we actually would judge an amendment by that would go to council. This isn't even considered amendment, yet it meets all of those criteria, in my opinion. But I do want to go back to... Didn't we include in the staff presentation the specific criteria for which we are to be determining... Or maybe this... Maybe it was the criteria determining whether it was an amendment or a...
Right. What Lisa listed out was what would be an amendment. What would be considered a major change would have to go back to council, and staff recommending that none of those are present. I mean, there's one... There is one subjective part of that, that if it changes the basic development concept, then the commission can say that it needs to go back to the council, but staff did not believe that these changes in layout were significant enough to amount to an amendment and that they... We did not believe that they changed the basic development concept.
Thank you.
So, let's see. We have had a motion and a second to defer for how long?
To defer one meeting. The motion on the floor is to defer one meeting, request the fire department to make a presentation and to reopen the public hearing.
Well, but I think a good point has been made, and I think maybe I should withdraw that portion... Withdraw the motion.
That's your prerogative. Do you want to withdraw?
I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Okay. Was there a second to that? Does anyone want to withdraw the second if they made it? Okay. You withdraw the second?
Yes.
All right. We're ready for another motion then.
Right. Can I make a comment, please?
Yes, yes, sir.
And I have to agree with Commissioner Haynes, because at the time I made my motion to defer, I'm speaking of the clause where it became consent and then non-consent. I think for as the egress/ingress coming in and out of there, it's an administrative issue with the staff and should not be tied in with what we're talking about as residents coming in and speaking.
Well, as your acting chair, I guess that leads me to ask, does anyone have any motion they'd like to make?
I move approval again.
All right. Second. Can we do that?
I don't know.
Can we take up the second more... The same motion, the same...
I think we've treated it the same way as a motion to rehear, which can be done by a commission member before we move on to a next case. So, if this is essentially a motion for reconsideration, which I took it to be, then if that is properly seconded, then the board could take up that motion for reconsideration of the previously issued and contemplated... issued and contemplated motion to approve.
That's what she said.
So there's a motion and a second to approve.
To reconsider.
To reconsider.
It's a motion to approve.
Okay. This is simply on the motion to reconsider, and then you would say, I need a second motion to approve.
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion to reconsider, raise your hand. All those opposed, we will reconsider. And is there another motion in light of that?
I make a motion to approve.
With staff conditions.
With staff conditions.
Second. Okay. I think we've debated it probably long enough. All those in favor of that motion, raise your hand. All those opposed, it passes, and we will move on to the next item. Thank you.
Do we have a form?
We do.
Do you want to talk about how they want to do staff reports?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Let's follow up just a little bit on how you want us to do staff reports. Doug, have you got some?
Yes. The comment was made about when we do a recommendation for deferral, when we don't have all the information from the departments. The first thing I'd want to point out is that the recommendation from the departments may really directly affect what our recommendation is. So it's hard for us to say approval with conditions if we get information from the departments, because we don't know what information we get from the departments. And so that's really impossible for us to do. We almost have to say deferral until we get the recommendation. Now, we can work with the wording of how we accomplish that, so that it can, if the commissioners have an idea of wording that they believe would be clear on that issue for the public, then...
What if you just rearrange the order of the sentences?
No, why don't, if you don't mind, let's talk about this a little bit and bring it back at the end of the meeting with some ideas.
Okay.
So we are now through with number two and number three. I have as our next item, number five. And are we ready for that? Do we have our form back? Yes. This is the subdivision. All right. If you're ready, we're ready to hear from you. Powell subdivision.
Okay. I will be speaking on item number five. Powell subdivision, re-subdivision of Lot 6, first revision. The request is to create two lots. It's approximately 0.78 acres. It's located at 2312 Campbell Street with frontage on both Campbell and Riverside. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. The existing zoning of the property is R-10, and all surrounding property is also zoned R-10. The current policy is T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance. Okay, this is a sketch showing the proposed lots. Lot 1, there is an existing duplex on the lot, and it would gain access from Campbell Drive. Lot 2 would be duplex eligible and would gain access from Riverside Drive. This is an infill subdivision, and the lots do not meet the compatibility as required for infill lots in neighborhood and maintenance policy areas. Here's a little table. The neither lot meets the requirement in regards to street frontage. They both meet the requirement in regards to lot size. Neither lot is changing their existing frontage. The proposed subdivision, like I said, does not meet the community character criteria. However, the planning commission may grant approval if you all determine that the subdivision provides for harmonious development in the area. The developer is proposing to limit the building height to two stories and 35 feet to the roof line. Also, Lot 2, which is the lot fronting on Riverside, shall have a minimum front setback of 55 feet to keep it more consistent with existing homes on that street. There would be a maximum of one driveway point per lot, and parking driveways and all other impervious surfaces within required street setbacks would not be able to exceed 12 feet in width. Again, given those conditions, staff would recommend approval.
That is open for public hearing. Hear now from the applicant. You have up to 10 minutes and can reserve two for rebuttal.
My name is March Edgerton. I live at 3940 Moserows Drive. This is a double frontage lot, so I would be doing away with that. Is there a way to bring up the map that shows the rest of the neighborhood a little bit? Just the aerial shot? Any of those work? Actually, the one that's just the map, not the aerial photo. Yeah, that one's fine. So parcels 2, this is a 50-foot frontage lot, parcels, so the, it doesn't meet comparability going five lots in each direction, but Lots 6, 7, and 8, which would be parcels 204, 205, and 206 to the south, are all 50-foot lots. Parcel 203 has old lot lines that if you reestablish those, would leave two 50-foot lots and a 40-foot lot. So other than that, it's pretty straightforward. The, it's, as far, I know that I spoke to the neighbor, parcel 3, the one next to the 320 something.
323.
That's depressing. I can't read that, but I can't. Anyway, I spoke to that neighbor at the request of Councilman Davis, and he was concerned about it being a duplex eligible lot, which I'm splitting it off from a duplex. Parcel 199 is duplex, and that guy's house is a, was built as a duplex and was on the tax records as a duplex till about a year or two ago. So it's surrounded by duplexes, so there you go. That's pretty much it.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Is anyone else here in support of this proposal? If you're here against, this is the time to hear from you. If you're opposing this, please come forward. You will have two minutes. Give your name and address for the group.
Thank you. To, well, my name is Rick Starks. I am the father of Derek Starks, who resides at 1429 Riverside Drive. To Chairman McLean and other members of the commission, I am representing my son, who is unavailable. He had a prior commitment and wasn't able to be here. I hope he remembers that come Christmas time, asking his father to come down and represent I would like to read to you some comments that he provided to me, if I may at this time. To Chairman McLean and members of the commission, this request is for the commission to maintain the subdivision regulation policy and not grant exception on a lot that would create incompatible infill. Denying the exception will prevent two-on-one duplexes being developed on a lot that doesn't meet subdivision regulations. Two-on-one duplexes continue to disrupt the neighborhood character and any historical preservation. Proposed Lot 2 frontage is 37% smaller than the average lot neighboring, and also contains assessments, easements, I'm sorry, on both sides of lot frontage. This exception would provide, promote non-harmonious development. Topography, multiple easements, adjacent water course, and narrow lot impacts the available building area, resulting in undesirable developments, regardless requested conditions. Councilman Anthony Davis letter. There goes my two minutes.
There's your two minutes.
I believe you have, I'll just make one quick comment.
One real quick.
I believe you have a letter from my son in your pocket, and also, I don't know if you have the letter from Anthony Davis, but there was a letter provided by...
We'll take a look.
Councilman Davis regarding this. So as I said, I am not familiar with the project, but I'm representing my son...
Thank you. Very good father.
...who asked me to do this. If you have questions, I try to answer.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this matter opposing the proposal? Mr. Edgerton, you have opportunity to respond if you'd like in rebuttal.
Okay. So Mr. Stark's son is the fellow who lives at the parcel there that I can't read the number on, but to the north.
326?
Yeah.
Possibly.
So anyway, I spoke to him once at the request of Councilman Davis, and then I met him after that. I deferred this last month also. That was when Councilman Davis sent a letter, which I believe he has, I don't know the process, withdrawn, I don't know how that works exactly, but I'm under the impression from him that he's fine with it. He did write a letter previously, asking for it to be deferred last month, which I did. So, but otherwise, the, when I met with Mr. Stark, I think his concerns, a lot of them have to do with sort of larger development issues in general. The property is zoned R-10, everything around there is R-10. I explained to him that, you know, he might want to pursue, if his interests are more preservation-related, that sort of thing, that he might want to pursue, talking to Councilman Davis about some sort of overlay, that kind of thing, but that it didn't, you know, my feeling was it didn't really have anything to do with what I was doing here, that this is a simple subdivision, which is, I maintain that is what's going on. So other than that, the staff's recommended approval, I've agreed to the, to the conditions that were listed, and I would ask you to approve it.
Thank you. We'll declare the public hearing closed and ask commissioners if you have comments. Jessica?
I'm kind of torn on this one. I mean, it's definitely very odd.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm very torn on this one, because it's a very odd-shaped lot. Can you show the aerial photo again?
The lot is there, outlined in red.
And the duplex is going to be?
There's an existing duplex here...
Uh huh.
...that fronts on Campbell, and then this, there would be a lot that fronts on Riverside.
And, but that one fronting Riverside would be a duplex?
Yeah, right. The lot would be duplex eligible.
It is already, by the way.
Right.
It seems like such a narrow lot for a duplex. And I do see the concern with the compatibility of the rest of the, of the rest of Riverside.
This is, this is an existing map of the area showing existing duplexes and multifamily with the near.
And how did you present the approval at the beginning? You said it was, you recommended approval subject to the commission determining?
No, recommend approval with conditions, with you all determining if it's harmonious, right?
If it's harmonious. Okay. So that's the key part there. We have to determine if it's harmonious.
Right. The, right, the planning commission can grant approval if you determine that it provides for harmonious development.
Okay.
And then these are the ways that the developer has presented to make the development harmonious, limiting the height and the setback being the two main, the setback on Riverside to make it consistent with surrounding existing homes.
Okay. I'm going to wait and listen to other questions.
Counselman Hunt?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just got a problem with the, I'm not understanding the configuration of the lot. Can you get back, back up there where it shows the lot numbers, 334, next one? Yes. Now, is that the only way in and out of that, off of Riverside?
No, there's access on Campbell here.
Is that a, the stop set, Lot 334?
Right. This 335 here is the lot in question, the one that's shaded gray, and there's an existing access to this Campbell Drive here, and then there would be access to Riverside. So it's essentially got two access points.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
No more.
Mr. Black here?
I have a question for staff. And it does look a little strange to have a set of pretty strict rules, in this case being the compatibility criteria, and then say, well, if it doesn't meet that, then as long as it's harmonious, we can just let it slide. I wonder, I'm not brand new, I'm almost like a year into this, but just for context, how often would we do that? Would we say, well, it doesn't meet these strict set of criteria, but if it's harmonious, we'll let it go anyway? Do you have any idea?
The subdivision regulations are written in a way to say, okay, these are the infill, these are the requirements for compatibility, and they provide kind of that strict 70% or 70% of the average of the surrounding lots, and it specifically defines what the surrounding is. But it adds in that clause that allows for the planning commission to make exceptions to that strict, to that strict guideline in cases where you all find it's harmonious. This isn't the first time that a case has come before you where the developer has presented criteria that they feel makes it harmonious. You know, I think we have them quite frequently where lots don't meet the requirement, and that you all are given the opportunity to review it to make that determination. I don't know the exact number, I'm sorry, but...
No, I'm sorry, yeah, I wouldn't expect you to know the exact number.
Yeah, but it does happen quite frequently.
Okay. Thank you.
Hunter?
I think we've had a number of cases like this relatively recently where the five-lot test, when you zoom back, you know, doesn't really necessarily reflect the character of the neighborhood. And then, you know, I think as we take each one of these, the lot area is not the issue on either one of these, and then if you look at Lot 1, the frontage is the frontage, and it already has a duplex on it. So it really comes down to the frontage on Riverside Drive for Lot 2, for me, and again, I zoom back and think about, you know, what's harmonious with the neighborhood. Well, the harmony here is extraordinary inconsistency. Including 50-foot lots, both to the north and to the south and to the, to the east of this. So, and there's a lot of very large lots that are potential infill opportunities down the road, too, and I think in many of those cases, you would see that to be consistent with this part of East Nashville, 50-foot lots would be consistent. So I know it's an, it's one of the oddballs, you know, here, but I, you know, I think it makes sense.
Speaking of oddballs, Jeff? I'm sorry.
Oh, that was harsh.
It was hard to resist. I'm very sorry.
Based on the Nashville Next observation that we need additional housing stock besides single-family and mid-rise and high-rise, I think, and to Hunter's point, if you expand out beyond the five-lot comparison, I think this satisfies the goals of what we need, and I'm going to support it.
I guess to me, the lack of harmony is sort of the existing lot. I mean, it's, it is, I think this would clean it up a little bit, actually, in terms of that. But that's, that's just, just me. So any other comments people have, or is there a motion? Either one is fine.
I move approval of staff's recommendation. Second.
Any discussion of the motion to approve? If you're ready to vote, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, vote no. And it is approved. Thank you. I think that brings us down to 12, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Oddball.
He said oddball, I was just repeating it.
Yeah, that's just hard.
So the next item to be heard is item 12. It's for 519 and 521 Weekly Avenue. This is request to rezone from RS5 to SP to permit up to four residential dwelling units on property located on Weekly Avenue, northeast of Baptist World Center Drive, and just opposite Fern Avenue. Staff recommendation is to disapprove. The zoning, current zoning for the subject property...
The zoning, current zoning for the subject property is RS5, and surrounding zoning includes RS5, IWD, and some IR. The land use policy for the site is urban neighborhood-evolving. The SP is not consistent with the urban neighborhood-evolving policy. While this residential policy does anticipate change in the neighborhood, it also emphasizes a high level of pedestrian connectivity, and the design of the SP ignores the policy objective to enhance the pedestrian environment. So, here we have the plan. The plan proposes two attached duplexes for a total of four units. It incorporates front-loaded garages with four individual driveways. This design creates an autocentric environment that fails to foster connectivity. Staff would recommend reducing the amount of pavement in the front setback and relocating the garages to the side or rear yard, which may require a different product type for the site. Renderings were submitted with the SP and show the prominent garages and pavement on the site, as you can see. Here's a side view, which shows the, the front-loaded garages that extend beyond the, the living space along the, the front of the, the structure. Also, here's an example where you can see the front-loaded garage and individual driveways, and how they can be a focal point of the development. In conclusion, since the proposed SP is not consistent with the objectives of the urban neighborhood-evolving policy, staff recommends disapproval.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing and the applicant. You have 10 minutes, and you can reserve two of those for rebuttal if you wish.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners, and chairman, and councilman. For the sake of.
Now, we need your name and address.
Okay, sorry about that. Ben Jordan, and I'm representing him as Marjorie Jackson. My address is 1011 North Fifth Street in Nashville, Tennessee. For the sake of council, I want to like to lay out some context and give a little understanding of the area. I'm sure you guys are somewhat familiar with it. With the design, I, this design in particular, it does address what the current zoning is designed, and its intent is to enhance the housing options, as well as honor what the current development patterns are. And it also honors what the current building stock is. And a lot of this, this particular area, Katy Hill, has a lot of duplex housing. In particular, if you just, if we just looked at Weekly alone, you've got 27 properties there, 12 of those parcels are, are lots. 15 of those have parking at either side, front, and there's only one that has rear, rear parking. The issue with the parking is more of an issue with, you've got only one functional alley in this whole area, and that is the only area where you actually have people opting to park to the rear of their residence. So, therefore, I believe the, the project and its design honors the, the primary intent of the policy, it's just the area and the topography of the area doesn't lend itself to a very pedestrian-friendly environment. The other thing, this particular property, actually, to the rear, the alley there is not even functional, it's not even built out, it's unbuilt space, and the consistency of the property and the parking is kind of necessary because Ms. Jackson is actually taking a level of risk in her investment in this property, because this area is still, although it's an evolving urban neighborhood, it still has its issues with crime, and in order for her to draw in a particular homeowner that would want to live in this area, they're gonna be definitely someone that falls in love with the area and makes an investment. And to create another challenge for her with regards to a safety issue would be a challenge for anybody that comes into the area and, and wants to make this type of investment. What I will say about Ms. Jackson is that her intent is to actually live in the area, she's actually already pushed off, already purchased the property on Fern, not a stone's throw from this particular location. So, she is definitely making an investment, not just in terms of just, she's not a traditional developer, she's just a, a citizen that has the means and, and has an interest now in the area, and, and she's making that investment. The other challenge in terms of just the risk that, that's involved for her as a, as a developer, so to speak, is that she's got a property right to the rear of this property, on the opposite side of the, of the alley, that would create an issue. It's the on-site processing parking lot in an industrial area. So, to force people to park in the rear of an area that does not have a accessible alley is a challenge, and it's a, it's a matter of hedging your bet in terms of the risk that she's taking on here. I'm here simply to ask that we, for your approval, and I'd really like to push this up to the council level, because we do have a councilman who is on board with this project, and he really believes that it's something that's really needed, that will enhance and bring in more people, that would bring in the, the type of housing stock that we're looking for based on the policy. Also, there is community support for it. I just take it, and I don't want to take it for granted, that you guys have received a letter from Councilman Harrison, as well as Ms. Lindsay Langley, who is the community organizer, and she's done a lot of great things with the, that community and the children in that community. So, what I would ask is that you would approve in spite of the recommendation from staff, and I want to thank staff for being so helpful, even though I've been difficult in this process in helping us get this to the table.
Thank you. You'll have up to two minutes for rebuttal.
Okay.
Are there others here in support of this proposal who wish to speak? Are there persons here who oppose this, this proposal, who wish to speak? We'll close the public hearing then and have discussion. And I think we'll start at this point with Jeff. Go around this way.
Can you go back to the aerial showing the neighborhood, please? So, the, the alley that he references at the rear of the property is a non-functioning alley? Is that correct?
It's correct. It's currently not built, and it's also just to the west of it, there's flood plain. So, that was not something we ever recommended them to do, to build the alley.
And his observation that the majority of the neighborhood has parking in front of their homes, is that a valid comment based on your research?
That is fairly common. On our recommendation, though, we relied heavily on our policy, which, in an evolving area, yeah, it looks at change, but also creating that environment where you're, you know, you have a high function for not just the, the automobiles, but also kind of creating the, you know, the pedestrian landscape there.
Great. That's all for me, thank you.
Jessica?
Have you talked with the, the developer about different types of design?
Yes, we, we met with Mr. Jordan, who's working on behalf of the owner-applicant, early on in the process, and talked about our concerns, and, you know, urged them to look at that and incorporate that in the design, but they did not want to go in that direction.
Okay. I mean, I appreciate the, that this is an area that, it does look like it's a challenging area to build, and getting new investment into the, into that neighborhood is, you know, important to start it evolving. And, you know, I definitely appreciate the letter from the community organizer in support of it, you know, so I, I don't know, I think I'm gonna listen to the rest of the discussion, but I'm, I'm leaning towards actually supporting it.
All right, Andre?
Well, I had a question, I guess, for Mr. Jordan, I suppose. I was wondering, I'm, I'm in favor of the duplexes, and I'm in favor of the, I appreciate the comments that you made about the challenges. I was wondering if, if, and maybe this is a staff question first, do we ever consider duplexes that are, duplexes this way as opposed to this way? I'm just curious if we could have, if, if the duplexes could be stacked, even just one pair of them, that would allow for a driveway, that then if, with the topography, they could have actual garages for their safety concerns that are in the back, but that then it would just leave for one driveway, that you could access all the rear garages with that topo change, and still have four good houses? And I think what we're trying to lean toward is people engaging with their neighbors on their front porches, and not disappearing into their houses, and not coming back out. And so, I guess that's my first question, is could we, is it still a duplex if it's stacked versus side-by-side?
Well, if there are two units and one, then yes, it would be a duplex, and it sounds like such a configuration would, you know, possibly address our concerns, so we just did not see a design that included that.
So, I was thinking, maybe if you left two side-by-side and put two on top of each other, then you could have a shared drive for all four of them, and then have the rear parking in the, in the garage, so that they could have access where they're sa, they feel safe coming into their garage. And then, in the other area, the lots that are undeveloped, we could, in the future, have houses that are more like that, so that people are more engaged on the street with each other, which is, I think, our goal, which creates safety, activity breeds safety, all those things.
Right.
Is that something that could be considered?
We looked at that, but the thing is, is we're, we're early, we're showing up early in this process with what the level of development that's going on in the area, and she would probably be the first to do anything like this on the street. So, there's a level of risk in terms of the safety, because the, the safety report from just in October was that there's a 20% increase of crime in this particular area. And so, to have a car, and to have it to the rear, and to have that industrial area back there with no real access to an alley was the issue, and I kind of explained that to Councilman Harrison when we visited the site, and just, just gave him the vantage point, okay, if you, if we were able to get a driveway back here, just understand that the, the level of safety and the risk and concern in terms of her investment in being able to actually sell the, sell the property.
Even if they could go into a garage? I don't understand the difference in the level of safety. If they're going into a garage one way or the other, is that not as safe?
Well, the, the front-loaded garage would give, would be, you'd be entering, entering and coming out to the street where there's plenty of visit, visibility to the other neighbors and whatnot, whereas if you exit the rear of the property, where you've got that cover, and it's an unfinished alley, and then on the other side, you've got an industrial space that's hardly ever occupied in the evening hours, it just, it just was one of those things where you had to hedge our bet in terms of just the design on this one, just to, because she's, she's new to anything like this. Thank you.
Just to clarify one thing, I mean, we, the examples that you typically see, and I think most of us are familiar with, are not, for this kind of situation, are not rear parking, they're mid-parking, where you have a parking court in between the, the units, and provides that security, and those are fairly common in Nashville, where you have a front-to-back duplex, and the parking's in the middle between, between the two.
All right. Councilman Hunt?
Thank you. You know, I can really appreciate this discussion, because you have to go out there to understand and visualize what we're talking about. I've been to a lot of the meetings, because this group is called North by Northeast. Some, many of the staff have been out there to try to look and see what the evolution of this area is. It's a, it's a hard part of a lot of stuff. Ben and a lot of the other people that's working in this area now are sort of the pioneers of trying to help this community evolve into something that's safe and good. They do have some crime out near the Fern Avenue area, there's a club there, but they've really got a grip on that. This borders my neighbor, I mean, my district. That's where now I've been able to go through there, go through there quite often. It can be something good, and it is involved. You got the river to the west, you got some industrial out there to the east. Like I said, it's just a hard part of a lot of stuff. But I think this group really have an idea and energy to put in here and make some of this stuff work. I've been out there on Katy Hill, and you saw the duplexes, I think they showed out there before, up on the screen before. Can you put those duplexes back up there? To my understanding, that's a lot of, but not that one, that one, that one. I've been in those, and they got a beautiful view, looking actually clean across the Columbia River to downtown. The area has a lot of potential. Like I said, they're the pioneers, because nobody else has really gotten in there to take a look at it. Along with Jack Carlton and a group of people, they saw the vision of this, and as far as the parking is concerned, when you look at the whole area, you got people parking in garages, particularly in the newer areas, as opposed to the, like the house next door, you got people parking on the street. They've always parked on the street. So, it's a hard part just parking, but they seem to make it work, and I just, I support any neighborhood that can evolve and get it turned over, where it could be productive, and people begin to get safe, begin to feel safe walking up down the street. I was over there not long ago, and this lady, was her name Katie, but built the first duplex over there, and she was telling me how safe she feels. She'd get out, and she'd jog, when she first moved there, she moved back from New Orleans, but when she first moved there, she would not walk down the street. I can see the changes going on over there, no more than what's been happening over there just recently. And like I said earlier, you really have to go out there and take a look at this community to appreciate what these people are doing, because I can tell you, I don't see a whole lot of people starting from where they are starting to make this thing work. So, for that reason, sound like the shark tank, but for that reason, I support this project, because it's something that's, I see that's going pretty good, and maybe at some point in time, we can get into that T4, the evolution, to make it fit. This is one case where I think planning have to help them fit planning, rather than them fit planning. That makes sense. I think that needs to happen. Thank you.
Commissioner Black, sure?
For the reasons that have already been discussed, I wouldn't be leaning towards supporting the project, but I had a procedural question for planning. I know we had been presented an item before, maybe a couple of months ago, that was inconsistent with the policy, and I think we, as commissioners, were told that we really didn't have the ability to approve something that was inconsistent with the policy. Is this just a different case, or if you could just explain that?
You'll need to make a determination as to how it's consistent with the policy.
Policy.
Right.
Okay. So, that means us just articulating various reasons why we think is consistent with the policy despite the staff's analysis that it's inconsistent?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, I, I agree with all the comments that have been made about, obviously, investing in our urban neighborhoods and the importance of that, and support, as the policy does, increase density. I do think, though, that there are a lot of different configurations that could be potentially considered. I think, you know, the staff had some ideas, and Andre had some ideas, so, and I worry about if we start this here, that the whole neighborhood will end up garages. And I think there could still be front-loaded garages, but that are less prominent even in the, in the design. There's no alley here, so whether it's a courtyard behind, or a parking area behind, or just garages recessed further back from the, the face of the building, perhaps, I think there's a lot of different other options that, that. there's a lot of different other options that, that, so I tend to agree with staff and certainly applaud the applicant and the owner for, you know, making the investment in this neighborhood and the meeting the policy in terms of our goals for infill and intensification.
Jeff?
Did you start? I started.
Really? What'd you say?
My turn.
My turn. Well, I'm, I'm not accustomed to speaking much. I do, I do think this is an interesting issue. And we don't actually, I think it's true that we don't have a, we don't have a policy that is so specific that it says we can never have front loaded garages. We have a broader policy that says we want to encourage walkability and all of that. Is that, is that a way to frame it? So I mean, it would take some, if we turn this.
The policy where we say is when it's connected to alleys, I think.
I think our policy is if there's an alley, you have to, you have to address the site from the alley. But in this case, if there isn't one, it's a, it's a policy in general, but not that determining. Is that right?
Right. I mean, if there's a built alley, then we would expect the alley to be accessed, but in this case, there's not. And so there's, there's different levels of policy goals. And this one is, one aspect of the overall neighborhood evolving policy is to not decrease the amount of pedestrian environment. So that's just one aspect of the evolving policy that you need to look at.
I believe it's the staff's role to, to hold fast to, to this recommendation. I think it makes sense for us to be the ones, if we're going to wrestle with it and decide it doesn't quite mean what they thought it meant, that's up to us. I don't want the staff to be promoting a lot of, a lot of things that they think is not consistent with, with, with the plan. So I did want to make that clear. But I am not sure that this is one that, that I can agree with the staff on because of the specific things that have been mentioned. I'm still listening though to the discussion and interested in whether there might be a motion this time.
I'd like to make a motion actually to support staff recommendation, but I'd like to explain why. And I think that, that creative design and good quality design actually breeds further good investment. And, and I think that if this is done in a, in a positive way, it will succeed and other people will follow suit. And, and I think the idea of creating duplexes in this area is really a good one and it matches what is going on in that neighborhood. But I think to be able to massage it a little bit so that it is a really, it might be challenging, but it would, the results could be exciting creative design that could be very successful. And then if it gets to that level, that will raise the bar for everybody in the neighborhood. And I think that's what we're trying to encourage with policy is to say if it's done well and encourages these goals, pedestrian activity which breeds safety and neighbors knowing each other and all those things, then it can accomplish something that we're trying to accomplish. And I really believe in design that much. And so I think if, if some time were spent to work on this design a little bit more, we could accomplish our policy and the neighborhood could get what it really wants, which is further fabulous, exciting investment. So I move we support, not to, not to disapprove the project or the goals of the project, but to disapprove this design.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Sir.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Well, just procedurally, if we could have, I mean, after hearing our discussion today, would you be willing to go, I know that the owner has decided she wanted to structure the garages that way for safety reasons and, but we've heard discussion about different designs and different possibilities. After hearing our discussion today, do you think that it's a possibility to go back and work with planning to find some ways where it would be more consistent with the policy?
I think the, I think the bigger point to understand with this particular owner is that she's not a traditional developer. She's just a private citizen. And she may not have the act, the, not necessarily academic, but the financial means to continue to go back and forth with the designer that's going to build her every time. And so that's the challenge here with this particular investor. And the reason why she decided to do it was because she had the means at the time to do this and then she's already got in mind a site there on Fern that she's planning to build her personal residence. So in terms of investment, she's, she's pretty close to top down in terms of just design and that kind of thing, so.
Okay. So I guess you're saying that there probably won't be any further discussion?
Only thing, I can't speak for her. I can go back to her and have that discussion again. But it's initial discussion when we were talking about with Melissa's recommendations to maybe change the design, that was the response. And I understand that. And that's just the nature of some people's situations in this respect.
Okay. Well, that was my.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Councilman Hunt?
I just want to make a comment. I guess I'm a little perplexed or confused about this conversation. I agree with what is being said about the design. But you know, as I travel through my district and through Nashville, there are all kinds of neighborhoods. And some neighborhoods require maybe a minimum design to get it up and where people would like to go and move and walk and play and all that. Whereas you have other neighborhoods that you have to basically cut out the whole concept to create a new design, like you're doing over on 10th Avenue. What do you do when you run across a neighborhood like that? I mean, designs are good and I agree with design for consistency, but not all neighborhoods are consistent. And I think that we could talk about design, which is great. I love them. It creates consistency. But you've got some neighborhoods, I scratch my head when I go through them every day. And I ask, where do I start? If I wanted to transform this area, where do I start? And starting from what I'm hearing here, probably won't get there unless you cut out the whole concept. Because I don't know what you've seen, the kind of houses that they're talking about over there. But these houses probably some of, it's almost like a shedding table. I hate to say that, but that's what it is. And, you know, I just don't, I don't, I don't see how all this design talk, which is important, can create an evolution to create what they're trying to do over there in that neighborhood. They're going to have to have some more help. It's got to have to be better than designs.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yes, I'm just thinking, I mean, I am a firm believer in, you know, getting investment into these areas as, as the catalyst to, you know, bring new developers in. And I know, I don't, that's so critical. But having seen some of the neighborhoods, you know, 10, 15 years ago where we sort of went by that rule of let's just get some resources and let's get a new project in here, that have turned the corner. And now you go back through and you can kind of pull out those first in homes and say, you know, they don't really work with where this, this community is going. And it's sort of made me reevaluate that a little bit more to think, you know, you really do want to do it right on the front end so that, you know, 20 years from now, you've got something that's sustainable and you're not coming back and saying, you know, that wasn't quite how we wanted to do this. But I also recognize, you know, that, that we've got a private citizen who doesn't have a tremendous amount of resources to put into this and you don't want to discourage that investment. So I'm very much on the fence with this. I do think, you know, it does sound like there could be some design changes made that maybe would not be so terribly expensive to implement. And I would, you know, I almost wonder if it would be better to defer to have that conversation than to have an up or down vote right now. But I'm not sure that that's what the applicant would be interested in.
Where is this in the process of council deliberations?
There's not a council bill, so it could be deferred since there's not a bill.
Well, I made that motion. Would, would the applicant consider a deferral as a more positive choice?
I think she would consider it, but we're, we're still talking about somebody that may be strapped with regards to the resources to, to go to that length and find another designer or spend more money on design in this particular project.
So the posture is that we have a motion to, to approve staff recommendation?
I mean, I would consider a deferral if my colleagues think that that's more productive.
I, I mean, it sounds like you're not in favor of deferral. I kind of am. I, I like the project and I hear everything you're saying. And I guess I'm a little stuck on the fact that if the ability for me to vote to approve it despite the staff's recommendation is me articulating reasons why it actually is consistent with the policy, I'm not sure I'm able to do that. So even though I like the project, I don't know if I could actually personally vote for it because I don't think that it's consistent the way it's structured right now. And, but I think that it could get there and I, and I recognize your points that there may be ways to get it there without hopefully causing your, your client too much more heartache and money.
Procedurally, if we did defer this, that does not have an impact on this citizen's right to file a bill at the council, right? I mean, she can go ahead and file a bill while we're deliberating. It's not like the.
Since it's a, it is an SP rezoning, then the council would not be able to introduce it on first reading without a recommendation from the planning commission without suspending the rules.
Okay. So it is a, since it's SP, that is different. We actually, if we did move to defer, if we successfully deferred it, it would impact her ability to get this into the council process.
Right. Unless the council suspends the rules.
She could file it, but it couldn't be heard on first reading. Well, it's up to this group. Yes, Hunter?
I just wanted to remind the commission that we are making a recommendation to council. Council can do what they so wish. Without a question.
On the motion to approve staff recommendation. All right. All those in favor, vote aye.
Disapprove.
Right. Which would be to?
Disapprove.
Disapprove this bill to approve staff recommendation to disapprove. All those opposed, vote no.
I'm totally on the fence.
What was the vote?
Three.
Three, three?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We just need another motion.
Not really enough.
There's seven of us here.
She did vote.
Right. It takes four votes to pass, right?
Okay. I do have to vote. I will, I, I think I'm going to vote, I think I'm going to vote to support staff.
Okay. Does that work or do we have to take another?
Well, how many, how many, how many are in favor of the motion? Raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Okay. How many oppose the motion? Raise your hand. Okay. That's four to three. You vote, or you vote. Well, you vote with, the rules are that the chair votes with the majority unless they declare otherwise. So that's five to two unless you declare otherwise.
How many votes does it take to pass?
Four.
Four. Okay. I declare otherwise. So it passes four.
So it's four to three.
So that is, we have approved the staff recommendation. And as I understand the posture of it, you understand it too, I mean, it can go to the council with that, where it, it can go to first reading with that. So there you go. Thank you. Thank you. I think they wanted that as opposed to.
Right.
No, we didn't. Okay. So now we're moving to, where are we? Number thirteen? Sixteen?
Sixteen.
Number sixteen.
Okay. Next item is item 16, Birchwood Bungalows. This is a request in, along, just to the west of Gallatin Pike along Birchwood Avenue. This is the property outlined in red. This is Birchwood Avenue. This is Gallatin Pike. It's a request to rezone from R6 and CS to SP zoning to permit eight detached residential dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Once again, this is the property outlined in red. Currently, half of the property is owned CS and the other half of the property is owned R6, which allows for single family and duplex. There is the zoning map. The community plan policy for this area is split where the CS zone property is within the T4 urban community center policy and the R6 property is within the T4 urban neighborhood maintenance policy with a special policy calling for single family development. The proposed SP is for eight detached dwelling units that come off of Birchwood Avenue onto private driveways with access to the rear. These units would face a central open space area, common area that has a walkway that leads back out to Birchwood Avenue. There are sidewalks proposed along Birchwood Avenue. As part of this SP, the height of these units are limited to 38 feet in height. All agencies are recommending approval. This has been to the, through the normal review process where Public Works, Fire Marshal, Stormwater, Water Services have all recommended approval of this plan. It does support critical planning goals. And the proposed elevations are included here. The front elevations would, would, are proposed to front onto the, the open space area and then the rear elevations would be on those, those private driveways, the two private driveways. Staff does recommend approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. One condition of approval is to continue to work with the applicant at final site plan approval stage to modify the architectural elevations so that they're closer to an original set of elevations that were submitted at an earlier date. They're in November, on November 17th, there was a set of elevations that were for a, basically that were designed for a different plan at the time. But those elevations would, would address the driveways and the open space better than the proposed elevations in, in our estimation. So staff is recommending a condition that was not in the staff report that was mailed out last week that would require the applicant to modify these elevations to be consistent, more consistent with those original elevations that were submitted and that we would not recommend approval of these elevations at this point. And these were the, these were the original elevations that were submitted previously that are, what we're recommending that the, the elevations be modified to be closer to in the future. So with that, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all the conditions.
Okay. Public hearing is open. The applicant will come forward and present. Have up to 10 minutes and two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you.
If you'd give us your name and address.
My name is Gary Wyszyneski and my office resides at 6064 Central Pike in Mount Juliet, Tennessee. And I want to thank all the, the planning commission for letting us present this project. When we first looked at this project, we took a look up and down Birchwood Avenue to see.
Okay. Public hearing is open. The applicant will come forward and present. Have up to ten minutes and two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you.
If you'd give us your name and address.
My name is Gary Wyszyneski, and my office resides at six oh six four Central Pike in Mount Juliet, Tennessee, and I want to thank all the planning commission for letting us present this project. When we first looked at this project, we took a look up and down Birchwood Avenue to see how we could blend with and enhance the neighborhood. At that point, we met with Councilman Davis to show him our plan and to show him that we didn't want to just build on this lot as we see a lot going on in Nashville. We wanted to do something that would create a little sense of community within the community and enhance the elevations and enhance the fits and finishes of all the homes that were on Birchwood. So, the initial plan that you saw on the screen, I've got some hard copies that would show that a little better. The meetings that we had with the councilmen were also enhanced with five or six meetings with planning staff in order to work through the major points of concern, which are always drainage, trash disposal, the architecture, parking, and emergency egress, also sanitation. We worked with all the departments in order to achieve those goals, and as Bob said, we achieved those. The elevations that you see in front of you, the big difference is the garage door location. These plans, we believe, really enhance the neighborhood. With the finishes up and down Birchwood is a combination of brick, stone, and a board and bat, which back then was Masonite, now it's hardy plank. So, we wanted to stay with the theme of the neighborhood. This plan, we believe, fits the city ordinance and also the pedestrian-friendly community that planning staff recommended. So, we're here to ask for your approval. And if I could, I'd like to bring up Doug Jenkins, my engineer with SEC, in order to address the engineering aspects of the project.
All right, that's fine.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Doug Jenkins, SEC Engineering. Our office address, eight fifty Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Murphy's Barrel, Tennessee. You may have seen some of the pictures. Previous use of this property was a daycare. There's a large structure on the property, a lot of impervious pavement with our design. We're actually adding a little green space, which in turn will reduce the amount of runoff from the site. The runoff does drain towards Birchwood Avenue, existing ditch there along Birchwood. Parking, we are providing two parking spaces per unit in the garages. We meet the, all the parking requirements. And as mentioned earlier, also the sidewalk added along Birchwood Avenue to improve that pedestrian access.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. So, you have up to two minutes for rebuttal at the end. Are there other people in here to speak in favor of this proposal? Councilman?
I don't mean to disrupt protocol, so I humbly ask for your apologies. I am in favor of this project with certain conditions. The planning staff and codes and water and sewer have worked hard in trying to do the best plan possible. I know originally there was some discussion, and there were initially maybe two possible plans. I am for a plan that A, keeps the parking off of Birchwood. Birchwood is a changing community, but however, I have a lot of retired professional people that are great people that live on that street, and this plan that's in front of you, and I'm not as good as reading them as some of you great people are, but this one keeps the parking off of Birchwood, I believe, and I'm for this. Also, just so the people that know, I mean, after continuing talks with some of my neighbors, of course, on third reading, I can amend this to make changes, and I am in full support of the project, long as I can keep that parking off of Birchwood, which this plan now has in front of me. And also, want to continue meeting with the neighbors. The developer did meet with the neighborhood two weeks ago at the East Precinct, and they made some recommendations, and I know that there are some here that I want you to listen to, they're going to come up for or some against, but the main thing why some of my neighbors are here today is because there was an original plan sent out and then some modifications that put some, I want to say at least ten spaces of parking on Birchwood, which is already congested enough. So, as long as we can keep the parking off of Birchwood, because the street is thinner than we thought it was after some of us started measuring it, and if we can keep the parking off of Birchwood, I would go in full support with the option to always do some amendments at the end to make my constituents happy. Thank you.
Just for clarification there, are you saying that at one point the plan seemed to be relying on on-street parking and didn't have enough off-street?
Neither of the plans have any parking on Birchwood. All the parking is on-site.
Okay.
Right. I think it was my understanding that the plan, that after talking to several, the applicant and others about this plan, that the extra parking they're referring to, I think, is the driveways that are shown on the plan that was handed out.
Okay.
Because there is no extra parking on the street.
Okay. So, I might be getting there.
So, during some of the discussion back and forth with the plan, you know, some of my neighbors who are unable to make it were wanting me to interrogate that concern about that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
But I want to remind the commission that the plan that's before you is the one that is up on the screen, not the one that was handed out. So, that, there may be an opportunity for us to, we may approve that second plan at this point, but that is, that would have to be referred back to the departments to review. They haven't reviewed that plan, and we've looked at both of these now, and I believe we would recommend approval of either plan, but the other reviewing agencies would need the opportunity to review this plan before that happens.
And it was a little unclear from the applicant which plan he was asking for approval on, so I don't, I mean, it would help us to know which he was asking for approval on.
In terms of process, if the commission wanted to consider that second plan, I would recommend that it be deferred one meeting so that that plan could be sent around to the reviewing agencies and recommendations could be received on that plan.
Does the applicant have something that could clarify this that you'd like to say?
As we work with planning staff, the original plan is the one we brought forward, and in order to be consistent with policy, planning staff asked us to revise to this plan here, so we'd be more consistent with policy, and we were very fine with this plan. When we went to the neighborhood meeting with Mr. Davis and the neighbors, they were very adamant that they liked the project, but they really liked the other plan. We're good with either plan. We would just like to move forward with the project. So, if they want the garage on the outside or the inside, we're happy to accommodate, but what we'd like is approval on the rezone, and if it was approved with conditions, that the plan go before all the agencies, we're more than happy to do that.
This was not the easiest meeting to be here to chair. I'm sure it'll work out pretty well. Are there other people here to speak in favor of this proposal? Are there people here to speak against this proposal? If you'd come forward now, and you have up to two minutes each, and if you'd give us your name and address, that would be good.
Sure. I'm Kathy Paris. I live at one zero zero six Birchwood Avenue, and I've lived there since nineteen eighty-eight. Birchwood Avenue has been a great street. It has a consistency of character. It's been safe. It's not a through street. We very rarely have parking on the street because the neighbors are cognizant of that everybody else doesn't like it. I mean, if we're going to have a visitor for a couple of hours, they may park on the street, but there's not any parking on the street regularly. I want to say that I am not opposed at all to the rezoning. I appreciate his designs, but I do not like the current plan. I am in favor of the original plan, and here are the reasons why. The original plan allowed for four parking spaces per unit, the two in the garage and two in front of the garage. It basically has one private driveway up the middle of the house, not the two on either side. So, with the original plan, there's four parking spaces per house. A three-bedroom house, two places to park is not, is fine if you have children, but these children get to be teenagers and they get vehicles. So, a three-bedroom house could have anywhere from two to four to six cars, depending on the family that lives in that house. So, two spots per house is really not enough for this many more houses on Birchwood. Another thing is, is that the original plan has less concrete on it. So, a lot of the neighbors, most all of them, have trouble with drainage on that street and water getting in their basement, and the plan that has less concrete, which is the one with the driveway up the middle, is better. And I did want to say one other thing. Eight trees would be saved with the single driveway because the perimeter trees can be left.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Come forward, please, and if y'all would line up so we can cut down on the tone between speakers, that would be good. Anyone else want to speak? Come and line up behind him because he's just got two minutes.
My name is Steve Hager, and I live at ten twenty-nine Birchwood Avenue. I've lived there thirty-two years. I own two houses that butt up to this project, ten twenty-nine and ten twenty-seven. Talking about the, this newer plan, current plan takes away, I believe, sixteen parking places. Now, Birchwood is only thirty, twenty feet wide. This, I'll do this real quick. The average car is six feet, six inches. If you get a six feet, six inch car on this side of the street and the other one across from it, if another average car tried to go through, they would only have a fourth of an inch on either side, not even counting the mirrors on the side of the car. That's an impossibility. What I really want to get to is, you could not possibly get an eight-foot, five-inch school bus, an eight-foot, six-inch ambulance, which we need, a seven-foot, six-inch fire engine. Wouldn't it be nice if they could get you to your house if your house was on fire, do you think? And a six-by-six police car could not get in there if you had a home invasion. The parking would be insane. It really would. They built four houses on this side of the street. They're going to build six, what is it, sixteen over here, and it's right at Gallatin Road, right at the worst possible place. So, the overflow from the roommates and all the other people, the visitors and the parties, it's all going to be right there, the first two lots off Gallatin Road. Do you think it's important to be able to get a fire engine or an ambulance or a school bus? If a kid couldn't get on the school bus, he might have to stay home by himself all day because the parents would be at work. You can't get a school bus to there. It's eight feet, five inches.
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Hello?
Hi.
I'm Ruben Stugert. I live at ten twenty-six Birchwood Avenue, and, which is pretty much right across the street from there. So, I really have some questions that I would just like you to consider and discuss in your conversation. The rest of the neighborhood is R six, and all of this stuff is new to me, so if I say something wrong, don't feel bad about correcting me, and the request is for the special zoning. So, I'm wondering why instead of the R six, or why not making the commercial piece into the R six, which would be consistent with the rest of the neighborhood? I personally wonder why we're tearing down the Birchwood bungalow, which is, I don't know what year it was built, but I'm pretty sure it's the oldest house on the street. And I would also like to know why we have to fit eight of them in there. Like, couldn't four work? And I understand from a, you know, business perspective that they want to get the most bang for their buck, but as far as being consistent with the neighborhood, it's kind of going to become its own little pocket there. And I've heard some, a lot of talk about pedestrian-friendly, and I see how this plan could be pedestrian-friendly for this little area, but I don't see how it's pedestrian-friendly for the rest of the neighborhood unless the sidewalk is going to be developed down the rest of the street, which it is only periodically developed down the street. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jeanette Peraza. I'm actually a Spain Avenue resident, but I wanted to bring up a point that my neighbor previously kind of touched on. We're in a horseshoe. All of us on Spain and on Birchwood use that horseshoe as like a circle to exercise, to walk our dogs on a daily basis. We live in a neighborhood where you can just, or we could before all the development on Spain happened. Just wave when people walk by. Now, you've got people almost running you over. They don't even, the new people in the block don't even move over for you when you're walking your dog, okay? Why are we tearing down beautiful houses that are obviously from the outside look like in great condition? It's been, as far as long as I know, it's been a thriving daycare business, and we're going to, you know, how hard is it to find a great daycare? You know? We're going to put these people out for a buck, you know? And do we really need eight houses? You know? I could see where they could build one right next door, but that's not even zoned for that. It's commercially zoned. Another thing no one's even mentioned is there is an auto body shop right there on Gallatin that would back up to that. The noise level, if I was thinking I was going to buy a place like that and spend that amount of money for a house for the noise level, that would be really ridiculous, you know, to constantly hear people working on cars. I don't know if you guys ever been that close to auto body shop, but it's very noisy, you know? So, anyways, I'm almost out of time, but I just want to say I'm totally against this, and I love this neighborhood, but I hate what's happening to it.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Shan Canfield, and I live at ten sixteen Spain Avenue. My question on this plan, what I'm seeing and nobody has brought up, is that the access for parking and garages, well, isn't your front neighbor going to be blocking you? How are you going to get out with all these houses that have cars in front of them? When the access is to get back on Birchwood, you know, where, how do you get a car out if your neighbor is parked in that driveway? Do you have to every morning go to your neighbor and say, "I'm going to work now. Can you move your car?" Or your two cars? The way it's configured, there's just too many houses in that property. I mean, if they wanted to do just four, maybe they could configure it where there was enough driveway space that you could get by. And that's my point, is that it's just too congested.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, okay. Great. Well, I think it looks like we've heard from everyone. The applicant has two minutes for rebuttal to handle anything you'd like to that might have come up.
The points that were brought up are very well taken, and on both plans, we made accommodations for the parking in the garages, and also the parking, according to traffic and parking, guests could park along the lateral perimeters of the two streets, or with the other plan in the driveways. The streets, according to traffic and parking, are twenty-foot wide, so you'd have plenty of turnaround room. So, we'd like you to consider the project.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing's closed, and we're ready for discussion. This is an unusual case, and I'm not exactly, because we have, we have two different proposals. I don't know if Rick or the staff would like... You could approve, you could approve this with a condition. If you want to approve the first one, the original proposal, you could approve it with the condition that it comply with the apartments and then send it forward with that as a condition. Or you could approve the second one, which is the one you see up here. And the staff is for both of these? Either one, either one would be, would meet policy. Part of the problem is the requirements, the width of the requirement for the concrete drive kind of minimizes the open space that you gain, so it's, yeah, so...
Yeah, there's pluses and minuses to both of them, and we were attempting to get more usable open space and have these front onto a courtyard, but there's some disadvantages that that creates in terms of the parking, so. But it is, either way, it's in a transitional area off of Gallatin Pike where a high... But it is, either way, it's in a transitional area off of Gallatin Pike where a higher density is appropriate. As long as they're detached, that would meet the special policy for having single-family, a single-family form of housing. Our concern is that the units have elevations and that front Birchwood appropriately and if the original plan, if it went back to the original plan, we would still want the frontages along Birchwood to address the street and not just have sides of houses on the street. So, we would want to see elevations for Birchwood so that there are windows and doors addressing the street.
Okay. I think Hunter can figure this out for us and explain to us what we ought to do.
Well, I generally don't like the idea of us making any kind of determination on a plan that staff hasn't presented a report for. So, though, you know, given Rick's comment, I'd be willing to entertain it, I suppose, if the rest of the commission does. I did want to address the question of density and I wanted to ask the question about the policy because we have a split policy here. We're on the edge of an area where we, I think we want to see intensification along Gallatin Pike and yet we're right up against single-family, single-family neighborhood. And so, I'm curious maybe most specifically about the neighborhood maintenance policy. Again, the term maintenance, I think often people think it means status quo, what it is today. But could you help us understand what...
Well, I mean, like I stated, given the location of this one so close to Gallatin and since the existing property has, is half CS and half R6, we felt like this was an appropriate place for a more intense transition and with the housing form being detached, we felt like that was consistent with the single-family nature of the maintenance policy in that area.
Okay. Thank you. And so, the eight units here is within the range of neighborhood maintenance?
Right. Maintenance, this, I believe, would allow up to 17 units per acre. Point five acres, or point four, seven acres and maintenance policy allows up to 20 dwelling units per acre.
Okay. And just, I think, for the reminder to the commission, but also for the sake of the public's understanding, that the policy allows a large range. It doesn't necessarily mean the maximum is always necessarily appropriate, but it sounds like in this case, Bob, what you guys are saying is because of this location, as a transition from the single-family lots to the commercial corridor, that this sort of moderate level of density is appropriate within the policy.
Right. I mean, I don't know that we would approve this mid-block, but given this location, I think this is appropriate.
Right. Okay. I guess as the representative on the historic commission, I can't get by without saying I hate to lose this beautiful stone bungalow that's there, but I don't think that's what we're here to debate, because they could get a demolition permit today, I suppose, for that. So, we're not in a historic overlay here, is that true?
No.
Okay. I guess I'm trying to understand too, while I think we really need to act on the plan that's before us, I did want to ask the applicant, the previous plan, which you handed out, appears to have one-car garages. Is that correct?
No, that's not. There will still be two-car garages. We could widen the door or we can just make them double-deep, either way, because the units are 24 feet, actually 30 feet deep.
Okay. But as, I mean, these elevations that you handed out show, those aren't two-car garages, are they?
No, they're 12-foot wide in width, but as far as depth, they'd be 30 feet deep. So, you could park two cars, one in front of the other and then in the driveways park another two.
Okay. Okay. I think there's, we may have sort of conflicting agendas to some degree because I think to get two cars parked on the driveway, probably need to be wider than 12 feet and side by side.
Yes, standard drive is 16 foot, so we add two foot to either side.
Are they in depth?
No. 16 in width and I believe they're 18 in depth.
Okay. Well, that's not what that plan shows necessarily, but so, I really think we ought to be talking maybe about the plan that's before us, so that's all I'm doing.
Well, thank you for clarifying all of that. That's great. Commissioner Blackshear?
I actually have no questions.
Counselman?
No comment.
Andre.
Well, I actually was looking at the site, I mean, the picture of the neighborhood and the zoning and the policy that we have. Could you put the picture up of the policy, please? My first question when I look at this is, why are we doing anything? I mean, it seems like the CS is in the CS and the residential is in the residential and we have a historic house on the residential and that's our policy and it works. I don't know. I'm just curious if we could just leave it the way it is and look one day to a transitional-type commercial project that would maybe, eventually, somebody could buy the body shop and incorporate that piece of the CS in with it and have something that's compatible with Gallatin Road and the neighborhood.
That's maybe possible, but the way it stands today, it's CS and we felt like generally turning the corner with CS where they have to have their own driveway on the side street and not on the, on Gallatin Pike. That's not something we encourage generally is for commercial to turn the corner and by rezoning this, that would allow for a multifamily or multi-unit development that provides that a little bit higher density transition to the main corridor where we're generally looking to see more density where there is a bus route along Gallatin Pike.
Could you not combine that portion of the CS with parcel 61 and accomplish the...
I mean, that probably could happen. I believe there's two separate owners though today, so maybe someday that could happen, but that's...
That's what I'm thinking.
That's not what's in front of us today or what the application that was made was.
If we wanted to maintain our policy the way it is, would that be a possibility to say that we'd rather wait and have it stay CS?
Residential is not inconsistent with the policy, so residential is encouraged along Gallatin Pike. So, that's, that's why we're also recommending approval of this.
Well, I mean, MU, it's MUL. When I just looked at it cold, just on my own, I thought, my comment was, why do we have to lose the CS and, or why not, why are we not talking about MUL or Mun that is approachable and compatible with these things? I don't know. I just, I'm raising that question. That's, that's what crossed my mind when I looked at it from a bird's eye view, that we have a zoning and a policy.
Well, I mean, basically what you have is exactly what we talked about. How do you transition off the corridor with more intense housing down to less intense? And what is in effect a cottage court is an appropriate transition. That was, I think Bob said, you know, it wouldn't be appropriate further on in, but as you, as you move in, you know, this would be an appropriate transition off of a, whether, a more intense corridor. This is, this is less intense, but is a reasonable transition into this single-family detached.
I'd like to listen to the rest of the comments.
Jessica.
I just, I feel like this feels like a very suburban development stuck right in the middle of Gallatin Road. Like, I mean, I drive that street daily and this is not what I would sort of picture. And so, I'm struggling with, I understand the increased density and the transition makes sense, but it just feels like it's not compatible with the rest of that. This is not the way to get to increased density off of Gallatin Road, in my opinion. But that's more of a design thought versus policy thought, I guess. So, yeah, I just, I'm struggling to feel like this is compatible with the neighborhood. And I agree that losing a nice historic home is unfortunate.
No comments. I really wanted to hear what you had to say. Please. I've heard your feelings. Well, I think this is a very fascinating thing. I mean, there's a part of me that really likes what's there, but you know, we don't own what's there and we don't get to choose necessarily as policymakers, recommenders, what we think we would want to do ourselves, but test it against what our, what the plan is. So, I'm struggling too. And I think it's, I don't think it's the fault of anything except the growing pains and the tension between people who like what's there and all of that. So, it's not the developers' fault exactly that we're puzzled about two different proposals, but I think we are a little bit. And I think both the property owners and the developers and the neighbors deserve our best analysis and I just don't think we're getting there right now. I just, I really don't. Maybe it's the time of the night. I'm at something of a loss to suggest what we, what we would move for. We've all been heard from, that want to be. We have a councilman who is interested in, with some assurances in something here, but I don't know what, where we go from here, partly because of the two somewhat competing Would one of y'all like to help us out with options we have?
What I've heard in the discussion is really three different approaches. One, that what we have now is, is fine to keep, period, until something more significant comes up. Number two is kind of where the choice between these two is kind of a transition. And the third choice is that this is not the, even if either of these plans is not the appropriate one, we need to have something very different in terms of a transition. So, it's a little different, those are pretty much fundamental kind of differences that I can't really offer a suggestion as to how you compromise that out. If you don't think this plan works, there's nothing in here that, I mean, yes, this is consistent with the policy, but if you don't think that it actually implements the policy the best way in this location, that's okay. You can, you can say that.
That is true and it may be worth noting that it's a preliminary thing. We're not going to recommend zoning that's not consistent with policy, but we don't have to recommend a change just because it's not inconsistent with policy.
Right. I mean, you would have this, and Bob brought it up earlier, if this same proposal were down on the street, later down on the street, it's, it technically could be consistent with the policy, but it wouldn't be appropriate in that location and that context. And so, you know...
I mean, we struggled with these same questions when, in recommending this and that's why there's, we attempted to work with the applicant to revise the plan and I'm not sure that the second plan was significantly different than the first plan. I think it has some things that are better and some things that may not work quite as well. So, that's why at this point, we're saying that either plan would meet the policy as a transitional, as a transitional use from Gallatin Pike. So, we struggled with the exact same things.
Hunter.
I struggle with, I think, some of the design issues related to both plans. What I agree with staff on is that I think this is an appropriate level of density as a transition from the Gallatin Pike corridor and policy to the single-family neighborhood. Is it an eight-unit multifamily building, you know, with a parking area behind? Maybe. Is it, you know, I don't know that this is the right form though for this neighborhood. And, you know, most of these cottage developments have been developed in areas where we have alley access. I think that's one of the things that's bothering me about this is the, the access is only from the street and it obviously has raised concerns in the community. So, I think for those reasons, I'm going to recommend disapproval, again, noting that for, you know, for design purposes and, you know, compatibility with the neighborhood.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there discussion of that motion? Before we vote, the impact of that motion, it again, does not stop this from going forward if a council member, district or otherwise, wants to promote it, but it gives a signal that we're not comfortable.
Could I ask one question too, for the applicant's sake and the neighborhood's sake? And first, to be clear, that the motion is around the applicant as presented, the application and plan as presented, not the second plan. It sounded like the neighbors, some of the neighbors preferred the second plan if they had to choose, but if we vote to approve this motion, could the applicant bring it back next month with the other plan or with a revised plan that addresses some of the neighborhood's concerns? Or is that a new application? How does all...
I mean, I think procedurally, if it made it to council, the council member could re-refer it back for a new plan to be considered, but once you have acted on this one, I don't know of any other, other than making a new application and paying a new fee, I don't know of any way that it would return here.
Or the applicant and/or council member decides...
It could be deferred today for a new plan to be considered. It could be re-referred back from the council for a new plan to be considered or a new application could be made.
Well, I would entertain a deferral as well, so.
So...
I wouldn't mind considering, I wouldn't mind considering if, if we do deny it, if they do come back with a second application, that we maybe waive their fee because we're not, I mean, that's a possibility maybe, if it makes us feel any better. I don't know.
I, yeah. I know Jim would not say it quite like this because he's a wiser person than me, but it seems to cry out for deferral to me instead of running the risk of starting over. I mean, everyone has heard our apprehension, our ambivalence. I don't know if I'm prepared to vote for an absolute disapproval. I think possibly all the players need to think some more about it before we come up with the definitive yes or no. But that's, that's my thought.
I was going to go along with the disapproval because I still am interested in leaving it the way it is with a CS and having the future of the, maybe a mixed-use density on Gallatin Road and a bungalow house in the neighborhood. So, I was going to vote for the disapproval.
Well, that's the motion before us at the moment, is a motion to disapprove with the second. Any other discussion?
Can I withdraw my motion?
If you can and if you can talk, talk people into taking their second...
I will withdraw my second for the sake of more discussion.
Yes.
That's a proper comment.
So, there is no motion before us and Hunter's going to make another motion now.
Well, I think because we as policymakers, you know, and, you know, care very much about what happens here, if we do disapprove this tonight, it may very well go forward and be approved by council anyways. And so, I think a deferral tonight would give the applicant the opportunity to meet with the community and with the councilmen and to discuss some of the concerns and to bring back potentially a plan or make some revisions to this plan that the staff will have time to review and make a determination and then we'll have the opportunity to move on. So, I'll move that we defer one minute. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, the motion to defer, vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, vote no. All opposed, vote no. Okay, it is deferred. The next item is?
Is there any guidance? Because we've been working with them for a while on different layouts. Is there any guidance on what you would encourage us to work on in terms of design?
No.
No, but I would like to clarify one thing, just to make sure. The plans that were presented to the commission tonight as the original plans basically only have two parking spaces, including the driveway. So if it's presented as having more than two parking spaces, it needs to be scaled that way, and we need to be able to review it that way because there's not room either in the building for two parking cars or in the garage, in the driveway for two. There's one, there's space for one in each.
I think the voices of the parking, accommodating actual parking was a big priority. I think maybe saving trees was a possible priority, if that makes sense, but it may not. I think connecting, just not having, thinking about the pedestrian access on the sidewalk is another consideration, but otherwise, it might just be thinking of something different.
From a design perspective, I mean, you are, you know, it is commercial right now. It's fronting Gallatin. Gallatin is still a fairly gritty street, and this just, you know, something that maybe blends to the residential a little bit better from a design perspective, but this would look completely out of place to me on Gallatin.
Yeah. I mean, what makes it difficult in the maintenance policy is the detached, single-family special policy. So that's what we were trying to work with.
Yeah.
So you couldn't have attached?
Not with that policy. Okay, we'll look at it.
I believe we're ready for item number 23.
They confused us by presenting and giving us the whole plan. That confused the whole issue.
Just for the record, this side of the room doesn't have TVs. There are screens anymore, so they're having to watch them up here.
All right.
All right. So the last item for this evening, item 23, this is the Bush-Spain subdivision, resubdivision of Lot 29. This is a request to create two lots on property located at 906 Spain Avenue, which is west of Gallatin Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. The subject property is currently zoned R6, and all the surrounding property is also zoned R6. The land use policy here is urban neighborhood maintenance. Also, there is a single-family detached special policy currently in this area. The plan proposes two two-family lots, which will be restricted to detached duplexes. Access will be limited to one shared access point, as you see. Also, the applicant is proposing to plat a contextual front setback. Since the policy is urban neighborhood maintenance, the subdivision is evaluated against the infill compatib, excuse me, compatibility criteria. As you can see, for frontage, it does not meet, in order to meet that frontage criteria, each lot would have to be at least 50 feet at the street. Both lots are proposed to be 49.14 feet, which is just shy of that 50 feet. For lot size, both lots do meet. The minimum lot size for each is 7,819 square feet, and they're proposing both lots to be around 8,144 square feet. As for the single-family detached special policy, the subdivision regulations do require them to meet that as well. And both lots are duplex eligible, and the applicant does propose to limit the development to the detached duplexes, which would maintain the single-family context at the street. So although the proposed subdivision does not meet lot compatibility for frontage, the applicant has requested that the planning commission grant approval under the provision that the subdivision can provide for the harmonious development of the community. So here we have a view of the site. Here you can see there are two existing curb cuts. If approved, those curb cuts would be consolidated into one. And in conclusion, staff finds that the proposed subdivision does provide for the harmonious development of the community, as the conditions proposed by the applicant do overcome the incompatibility of the proposed lots with regard to the frontage. Therefore, staff would recommend approval with conditions.
Thank you. We're ready to open the public hearing. If the applicant could come forward and present your case to us?
I guess that's me.
I hope so. I hope it's somebody out there. You have 10 minutes, or two minutes for rebuttal.
My name is Richard Sisk. I reside at 128 Georgetown Drive. I'm the son-in-law of Ann House, who resides at 906 Spain Avenue. So she's asked me to speak on her behalf. Basically, the original plot of this was two plots. The original design of the subdivision, we've seen the original design, this was actually 904 and 906 Spain. And when it was originally sold, it was sold as one plot and became 906. The house next to it is 900 Spain. It's 900 and 902. So all we're asking is that it just be submitted as it originally was designed in the two plots. If you pull up the neighborhood, you'll notice that this lot is a lot larger than most of the lots in the neighborhood. So to make it aesthetically pleasing to the rest of the neighborhood, if it was split into, it'd be almost identical. The original plot shows that it was 100 by 165, so somewhere along the line between all the measuring, it lost a foot. So, I mean, it should be 50 foot across by what it was originally set up as. I'll keep it short because I've been up since quarter to four, and I'll be up at quarter to four in the morning. So you're getting into my bedtime. But, you know, she just would like to subdivide it, so we've worked with several developers, and the only way they could aesthetically do anything and make it look right would be if they subdivided it so that they could put four, you know, property, four houses on this property. So, you know, because it's such a large lot, if they did two, it wouldn't coincide with what the other developments have been doing it there. It would, it just wouldn't look right. It would be bigger lots, and it wouldn't look aesthetically the same as what they're developing. So, you know, like I said, originally, we're just trying to get it subdivided as it originally was set up.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on behalf of this proposal? Come ahead and give us your name and address.
My name is David Clark. I live in Old Hickory, and I'm a builder, developer, investor, and proposing to buy the property from Ms. House when it's developed, when it's subdivided, hopefully. And presently have some properties similar to what you see here under construction, and that's what we would propose to build on that street to give it a very single-family look. We have these now on Stainback Avenue, and they would be non-connected individual homes with the parking in the rear, so there'd be no out-front parking.
Just share that with her so she could send it around for us to see. Thank you.
So that's what we hope to be able to do.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Others in support? If you're here to speak in opposition, please come forward. And each person has up to two minutes, and give us your name and address again.
I'm Kathy Paris. I live at 1006 Birchwood Avenue. Birchwood Avenue, Fern Avenue, Spain Avenue, it's a U shape. There are already 22 new additional houses on Spain that started in January of this year. So the traffic and additional infrastructure is not, it does not support this lot being split and four additional houses, well, three more houses in addition to the one that's already there. So I understand that we want density, but I also understand that we need to aesthetically try to keep within the nature of our historical homes. We don't have a historical overlay. We don't have a contextual. We don't have a conservation, but I think that continuing to build these new houses on these older streets that don't look anything like our bungalows is just, to me, it's negative. Also, I think that we should stick with the plans that say 50 feet. There's not 50 feet available, so I think that we should stick with the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else who plans to speak could come up behind the current speaker, that would be good.
I'm Shan Canfield. I live at 1016 Spain Avenue and have lived there for 35 years. Now, we do have 22 new buildings or homes on our street, and for the most part, I think they're darling. I love the porches. I love the design of it, but what's happening here is we're getting too dense. Our streets are getting ruined. Our little bridge is getting cracked. The traffic is not good, and my concern is what kind of pull is all this density going to do with our public services, our garbage pickup, our recycling, our electricity, our water, our runoffs? I think Spain, you know, I'm just going to continue to come here. I know they're still building more, but I'm going to say enough, even though they're pretty. We've got enough people on this street.
All right. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Crystal Lyle. I live at 905 Spain Avenue, directly across the street from this property. For the past seven, eight months, it has been total chaos in our neighborhood with all of the construction, the construction crews, the utilities. You cannot get up and down the street at all. Many, many mornings, I have had to walk from construction site to construction site to ask someone to please move so I could get out of my driveway and go to work. It's just been an absolute nightmare with just all of that going on. Now that these houses are selling, we're getting the additional traffic of the people who have purchased the properties. They, for some reason, although they have driveways, they're parking on the street. And twice this past week, I was almost hit by one barreling out of the driveway, not even looking, and it's just been an insane situation. And the previous two people said 22 houses. I counted 26 houses in seven months. Our street is less than a half a mile long. I've lived in my house for 18 years. I plan to live there for many more. The houses that are now towering over on the adjoining sites leave us absolutely no privacy. They are huge beyond belief, beyond what we have, and it's just overwhelming. It's just too much. I definitely oppose this change to have four more houses directly across the street from me. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys know, I'm Jeanette Perazzo. I live at 915 Spain, about three houses down from where this proposal is going. I moved in on Spain Avenue a little over a year ago in October, and about three weeks after I moved in, they tore down a house next to me and built two houses side by side. I'm in the music business, so I bought, or I moved into a place that I had extra room I could record from home. I've never once been able to record any music at my house because of the construction noise. They even build on Sundays, and it starts sometimes 6:30 in the morning, you know, and goes till sundown. But I just wanted to say that this has brought in crime. I know this, people were like, how? I've had neighbors, because people assume that these houses are going to be torn down, people come and they steal people's deep freezers out of their backyard. I've had lawn chairs stolen repeatedly. There's been a lot of, like, a wave of crime. I even had someone try to break in my house at 5:30 in the morning and try to mule-kick in the door, and also tried to break in the new houses next to me as well. So it's brought a lot of chaos. The streets are constantly dirty, congested. The school bus can't get through. I live right next to a guy who's got one lung and who oftentimes the ambulance comes for him, and they struggle to even get through because these guys, you have to guys, I wish you guys would just come and take a field trip down. I invite you to Spain Avenue to take a field trip and see what is really going on there. People are, both sides of the street, no one can get through. And I've had people trespass on my property. I've had people steal water from my neighbors, from myself, utilities and all that stuff, dig up my yard to get into the water main and not repair it and leave just, and leave my lawn just a mess. And then I have to call the developer and beg them to fix it, leave a huge rut, and I gotta say, please come and fill that with gravel, you know? They don't care about us. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. You have two minutes for rebuttal, if you'd like.
Pass this around. This is a petition. Ms. House had eight of her neighbors that are kind of surrounding her that have signed that they're in favor of it. And I understand the inconvenience of construction. I sell aggregate equipment parts, is what I do. All the rock cores around this area, I sell the parts of that equipment to the conveyors and the crushers, so I understand the construction in. That's a temporary situation. Once they get built, those vehicles won't be there. I've been coming up and down Spain Avenue since I met my wife 27 and a half years ago. It looks aesthetically better now than it did. You had older homes, a lot of them not being repaired, not being taken care of, falling apart, and these new homes, that's what they're replacing, is a lot of those homes that really were an eyesore in the neighborhood. So once it's all done, it'll be a lot aesthetically pleasing. It'll be with what Nashville Next is pushing, the type of homes for young urban families, for people that want access to Nashville but don't necessarily drive, they have public transportation, the bus is right atop the street. So this is really what Nashville is looking for, is more of a development with homes that younger people want, people that'll be involved in the community, people that like walking the neighborhoods, walking their dogs. So once the construction is done, that'll be a lot nicer. There are sidewalks up and down for people to walk down. There's sidewalks on one side of the road already there. So, you know, the development's already there. If you stop, then you have killed the economics of the neighborhood. You've got older homes, newer homes. Who's going to want to move in and buy a new home that still has all these older homes? So you've killed that economic development totally for that neighborhood.
All right. Thank you. Okay, declare the public hearing closed. We're open for discussion. And let's see, who should we talk?
I have just a couple of questions.
Yes. Okay, make sure you speak into the.
Okay, just for our record, in the staff report that we got, it says disapproved, but it is approve with conditions.
The earlier report had disapproved. They then separated the houses, and so they became separate houses. And you had a revised report that said approved.
Okay. And then on the conditions, it says limit both lots to single-family only.
The report that was sent out today, as well as updated online, has updated conditions as well with no longer including that, but including the condition that any two-family would have to be detached.
Would have to be detached, attached?
Detached.
Detached. Okay. Okay. I don't know that I want to start the discussion, but.
You have to. Go ahead. You can say you don't have anything to say.
Okay. I am in favor of the subdivision. I'm not sure I understand why these need to be duplexes again. I feel like that's, but that's probably not the point of discussion at this point. I mean, the.
Well, I think if you're asking a question, the staff could probably answer that. Is it a?
Well, it's, go ahead.
Well, I think they wouldn't necessarily have to be two-family. Both lots would be duplex eligible, and there is that single-family detached policy, but looking at that along with the character of the street and working with the applicant to get those detached, staff felt like that would more so work to maintain the single-family character of the street with the rhythm of the structures. So they wouldn't have to be. So, they wouldn't have to be duplexes, but, but that would be, uh, an option if you were to approve it.
And out of curiosity, out of the 27 homes that, that the neighbors referenced that have been built in the last, since January, are these single-family or are they duplexes? Do we know?
Many of them are, are duplexes. This area is zoned R6, which permits one and two-family residential.
So, I understand that it's, I mean, I'm, I'm for the density and, and understand that that meets with the goals of Nashville Next. But, you know, this is one horseshoe and I can see, I mean, there is not, there's one way in and one way out. I can see the concern about, you know, really continuing to increase the density in that one small little area. Um, I mean, if it cut through somewhere, you had another way out, it, it might be easier. But, I mean, that's funneling a lot of cars through an area.
Well, you go this way, but, I mean, it's still, I mean, you're on a horseshoe. They're right.
All right. Anything else?
No, those are my concerns.
Okay. Doug?
No comments.
Hunter?
I think I'm totally confused, but what seems to make sense to me here, and I don't know if this is what either the applicant's asking for or the staff is recommending, but is what the staff report says that we received. And that is that if subdivided into two 50-foot lots, which is what the neighborhood consists of currently, that they should be single-family homes because of the policy. And I think that's what needs to happen.
Well, um, the staff, upon a further evaluation, found that if you detach them, really, it's, it's working to maintain that single-family rhythm. So, um, that, that is our recommendation.
Say what you're recommending.
Our recommendation is approval with conditions, and one of the conditions would be that any duplexes would have to be detached.
So, you're not requiring duplexes in your, but of course, that's what would be built.
No, sir. We are not requiring this.
And Hunter, what are you saying in terms of your analysis that, given everything else, why?
Well, I was reading the staff report that we were given that I think suggests that if you were to subdivide this, that, um, both lots, um, are limited to single-family only, um, which would be a single unit on a single lot. And I think, given the lack of connectivity here, the narrow streets and lack of parking, the, uh, already increased infill, uh, the challenges that we've seen with maintaining the character of the neighborhood, um, I think two 50-foot single-family lots, um, makes a lot of sense. I don't know if that's what they're asking for.
I don't know.
Thank you.
Or if that's what the staff wants.
Well, just, just to try and clarify that, they're, what they do, they're requesting a rezoning. I mean, they're requesting a subdivision. And they do not comply with your infill subdivision standards. Therefore, they're, they're requesting the effect of a, of a variance or a deviation for those standards. And, um, if these were two 50-foot lots, they could put, and met your standards, they could put two attached duplexes, one on each lot.
But they don't meet our standards.
I understand. They don't meet your standards. Therefore, staff recommended that in order to meet the policy, that if they were going to put a duplex, the policy calls for detached single-family. So, we said, okay, if you're going to put a duplex, then you could put two detached single-family. All that being said, that would not, if the commission is of the opinion that it needs to be limited to, to one single-family, you could do that too. I'm, I'm getting to, so.
So, Hunter, you're suggesting that, that it's sort of a double whammy. It's giving, doing a subdivision that it's not quite a slam dunk and then doubling the units, both. So, did I hear you make a motion to approve with that change?
Well, I.
It's getting late.
I'm happy to hear from others, but sure, I'll go ahead and, and make a motion, um, to approve the subdivision. And let me make sure, Rick, help me.
Your, your motion would be to approve the subdivision and the deviation from the standards with the condition that there be one single-family house on each lot.
And the other conditions.
And the other, the other conditions.
And that that subdivision is harmonious with the lot pattern in here.
That's what makes it harmonious.
That's right.
Is there a second to that motion? Is there any discussion?
I have a point, maybe for the record, that might help us be less deviate, deviating less than we were, is the way I read the plan, it says that the frontage on Spain is 49.61 feet, split in half, and it's back at the back lot, it's .14. And we measured the lot frontage at .14. So, in fact, we're not as, quite as far off as we thought we were, right?
That's correct, but it still doesn't get you to 50.
No, I know, but I mean, it's, it's, like he said, they may have lost a foot out of 100 feet. And so, it's, .78 of a foot is what he's short of. And so, it's, it's so close that I think I could be comfortable with saying that it even is harmonious in its subdivision regardless. But I just wanted to point that out for the record. I really think it's 4.961 is what we're dividing our frontages in. And so, we're less than a foot away from the overall 100 feet that we would need.
Any other discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, but no. It's approved. And I believe we're ready for, um, some of those other things at the back of our agenda.
Historic report first. Okay. Just one, one minor thing on the, uh, on the developers' report, uh, the directors' report, developers' report, directors' report, it's been too late.
I heard they were the same.
I did note this, but I wanted to make it for the record. Brandon Burnett is, uh, he's leaving. Um, he's going to go to work for Dale and Associates, and we have instituted a new, uh, policy for handling any Dale and Associates applications, uh, for the next 18 months. So, uh, you may never, may not see Brandon because we may or may not be able to process any. We think they're all complex and complicated, so.
Yeah. That sounds good to me.
But we wish Brandon well. He's done a great job here and, uh, and we do wish him well.
Sorry.
Okay. I'll, I'll look back. So, that's the staff, that's the directors' report, other than what you had sent us out, which was always very helpful to get, by the way. Appreciate that. So, uh, now we have, uh, an item of new business from Hunter, or a question from Hunter.
Yeah. I would just like, um, the staff, Doug, uh, to fill the, um, commission in on how we are moving forward with community plan amendments, because I think there's maybe a misunderstanding out in the community of how we're doing that, given that we're going through that with Nashville Next, just for, for clarity purposes.
Okay. Sure. Uh, so, to be able to change the policy, uh, or to be able to even present this body with a policy, uh, that, where there is clear change, uh, throughout the county, we need the policies to be static for a moment. And, uh, and to do that, we put before you, uh, the opportunity to do a moratorium on applications for policy changes beginning January 1. And we chose that date because that is the date of, uh, one of our filing deadlines. But that is not to say that you can't file for a zone change, uh, even if that zone change may be inconsistent with, uh, the current policy. What we would do then, instead of normally what we would suggest, is we'd suggest that if you're a property owner and you're trying to rezone your property and it didn't meet policy, that we'd ask you to also file an application to do the change for the policy, uh, for the property. And what we will still do is when you file your application for a zone change, staff will do an analysis and compare it both to the current policy that we have and also, if it's different, the proposed policy. So that you will, the commission will get a chance to say, okay, well, if it, if this piece of property is in neighborhood maintenance today, but it's changing to neighborhood evolving, then you're going to get a staff analysis that compares those and have an opportunity for the commission to make a decision. So, it's not a moratorium on zone changes. Uh, it simply is making the policy maps static for a period of time until this commission can consider and vote on the proposed policy changes that will come along with Nashville Next.
Thanks, Doug. That helps. So, does that mean if you're submitting a zone change that is inconsistency, inconsistent with policy, you don't have to go through the steps of a public meeting, community meeting necessarily, to submit your zone change?
Well, if it's inconsistent with both the existing and the proposed policy, then staff has no choice but to recommend it be disapproved in that case. I mean, we probably would, we would advise someone to, that they might want to wait for that process or wait, you know, or, or bring it up during the Nashville Next. Obviously, during Nashville Next adoption, there's opportunity for people to make requests to change the policy at that point, too.
Hunter, if you, if your sentence went on to say, if their proposal matched the new policy, if we phrased it that way, then would they have to go through the public process again to change it, or could we approve it?
We'll be presenting them, if they're meeting the new policy, we'll present them and state they meet the new policy, or proposed policy.
And if they met the new policy, then we're going to have public hearings on the changes to all of those policies. I think, though, that Rick is correct, there is a scenario that you've just described that, that could come up where there is a zone change that's proposed that meets neither the current nor the proposed policy. Uh, and, um, it, you're correct. I mean, they, they, because we wouldn't be recommending a policy change at this time, then they wouldn't have to go through that at this time. And, uh, but this commission could certainly disapprove that or recommend that, that we require that they go forward and have a community meeting and then come back with their, their zone change. Under that scenario where somebody proposed a zone change that meant, met, did not meet either the current or the proposed policies, um, we hadn't considered that scenario, but I think that I would recommend that the commission require anybody that proposed a policy, or a zone change that didn't match either of those policies, uh, to have a community meeting before moving forward with the, the zone change, to consider the implications of that zone change.
But that wouldn't happen until it came before us.
It wouldn't happen before then.
In other words, we haven't established a policy that for, during that six-month period, if your zone changed and meets neither policy, then, uh, a community meeting is required.
We have not, nev, having not thought of it until you just pointed that out. Seems short-sighted not considering that earlier, but I think we, well, if you want.
The technical part, in accordance with your rules, and this, I mean, this kind of brings you back to that. Your, your rules anticipate, and let's just forget the, where we're at now, because this would still work under your rules. Your rules either anticipate that you state in your motion how it meets the current policy or you direct the staff to prepare a, an amendment, which we would then roll into probably the Nashville Next update or something like that.
I think that's what we'd have to do. Bob was just pointing out that part of this, this, trying to make it static for a moment is also just a resources issue. Uh, it's about the, even the ability to attend additional community meetings to what we have going on during that period of time. So, I, I would say that if it came before the commission, and that may be that the policy, I think that Rick has pointed out is probably the right one, is that if the commission, despite the current policy, despite the proposed policy, agrees the zone change is appropriate for the area, that it recommends that the, that policy change that's required for the zone change be incorporated into the proposed changes for Nashville Next.
And I, I think the, the, the issue we may run into is that there are probably folks out there who have been working on development plans, working on potential projects, planning on, uh, submitting for rezoning, perhaps planning on submitting for a, uh, community plan amendment, um, may not have met with the staff yet, perhaps, and, you know, in a couple of weeks are going to be sort of cut off. And they may have plans to suggest a different policy than what's going in the, in Nashville Next.
Well, I, I mean, I think that with the, the commitment, number one, Doug is absolutely right. We've got people that are just overworked and they can't go out there. However, I don't think that the fact that the commission holds a rezoning hearing, and you're going to have all of input from that, and during that short time period, if you sensed after holding a zoning hearing that this is the right thing to do, and then, and you direct us to incorporate that in, I don't think that's the end of the world. I mean, I think that's, I mean, you know, we, we may, we may agree in some cases with what, what they're proposing. So, uh, um, I think it can work. I think the zonings can go through. I think that, uh, there, there's going to be some policies that need to be, you know, just simply incorporated that way, and then you'll have your public hearings at the end that'll, that'll get them all worked out. Yeah, we're going to have a little bit of a situation for three or four or five months, but we'll get, we'll get through it. We're not going to hold up the zonings. I mean, there will, there can be situations where what you're describing is, yeah, they're proposing a zoning, they would propose, but you don't agree with the zoning. You don't agree with the policy amendment.
Sure.
So, yeah. But in those cases where you do, I would argue for that short period of time, that one hearing, which is, is going to be here before the commission, will give you enough sense to know whether you ought to direct us to change the policy.
Will there be sort of a sense to, oh, sorry. Sorry. Will there be a sense in January of some of those areas where there may be greater inconsistency between current policy and the Nashville Next policy?
Oh, we, we know that now. I mean, there's, that draft is out there now. Yeah.
So, that's, okay.
And I don't know if we've done it. We, we were making efforts at the beginning of this week to make sure that it was on the front page.
Okay.
Of the, the National Planning Commission website.
Okay.
That when, when, when it first comes up, the very first thing you see is the proposed policies, uh, so that you can compare them to what we have today.
Okay.
To make it easier so that everybody would be able to find exactly what the policy changes that are suggested today are.
Seeing no further business, I declare we adjourn.